I saw you somewhere, I got a handful, I don't know if you saw the handful.
That's man, the first one.
Okay, your, yeah, your vehicle's a little more of those.
It is, it's funny how small.
I suspect.
You and your wife know them.
I'm here, I'm just, I'm just wait to see, I don't know. Seems like.
Anita.
I'm glad.
I think he's a part.
Josie is on.
Yes, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, yes. We're live.
No.
No, I'm fine.
It's actually.
I'm doing exercise all night.
I left last council. I have to.
All right, ready? All right, good evening. I'm going to call the Senator City Council meeting order for October tenth, twenty twenty three. Everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, states of murder. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all. Would you lead us in prayer?
Sure, we're standing for prayer. Our Father in heaven, bow our heads at this time, Father, and give the thanks for our many blessings. We're thankful for the opportunity to gather here this evening to see to the needs of the city. Thankful for the many employees that we have, or the work that they do for our citizens, for the positions that we have been elected to. And ask that thy spirit be with us tonight, that we will be respectful, that we will be, that we will listen and we will look to the, the best of our citizens, and we are again thankful for the opportunity that we have. Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
One call. Darren Warren.
Here.
Josie Reed is on, Josie?
Here.
Heath Higginbotham is not here. I'm Blitzer Cowherd.
Here.
And Amy Roche.
Here.
Okay, so first on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. They've been in your Dropbox for about weeks now, there has been no changes. I would like to make a motion to move those minutes. We've got a motion from Misty, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Josie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any approve? So like, yeah, someone like make a motion to like receive of the Senator Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from August fifteenth, and Planning Commission meeting minutes from September fifth and September nineteenth.
So moved.
We have a motion from Josie, we have seconds? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next is our financial report, I'm gonna bring Shannon up.
Hello, so we are currently three quarters of the way through the year. Which means that our budget percentages need to be over seventy-five percent for revenue and below seventy-five percent for expenditures. We're currently sitting at seventy-nine percent of our revenue, so we're ahead of the game there, and we're at seventy-one percent of our expenditures. So we are sitting good for this time of the year. I also included in what we received from our ambulance billing for the month of September, which was twenty-three thousand four fifty-five, four. And I will make a copy of this for you guys, I actually didn't get it for you. I have a list of everything since our billing started, so we had a total charges of five hundred fifteen thousand six fifty-two. We've received a hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred twelve dollars so far, and we have an outstanding AR of two hundred and thirty-seven, six sixty-five. The remainder of that is a lot of write-offs and things like that because of Medicare and Medicaid. So, I think all in all, it's been doing pretty well for the ambulance billing. And I also brought Tyler here now that we're starting a new quarter, and he's gonna discuss with you guys our investment and answer any questions that you have. Did anyone have any questions for me?
Maybe this was explained and forgotten, so all the ambulance fees, do those just go into the fire department and to the general fund?
The money that we get from ambulance billing goes into our revenues and the general fund.
Okay.
You're welcome.
There are no write-offs, Shannon?
There are contractual write-offs. I'll send you this form, it talks about they have bad debt write-offs for anyone who can't pay. They also have contractual write-offs because Medicaid and Medicare can only cover up to a certain.
Do we eat that?
Pretty much, if that's how it is with all insurance.
When they say unable to pay, is there, I mean, is that us reaching out to them, then working with the, like?
Bad.
Is there negotiation?
Yeah, there.
Fanful, I know.
There's third-party billers that they send in when they send into collections and things like that. Thanks. Anything else?
Power, I think.
Good evening, council, I have today basically summary of the last twelve months. And then projections for the next twelve months, as far as the ten million that we put into treasuries a year ago. As of today, we're at ten million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. It's about two point six percent, it's about what we expected, given that the first few sets of bills were three, six, and nine months, and not a full twelve months. For the next year, we're looking at a four point seven nine one percent average interest rate. That will increase throughout the course of the year. And total interest to be credited for all twenty twenty-four, we four hundred eighty thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents, that'll bring the total to ten million and seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred one oh.
Any questions for Tyler? You're none? Someone make, make a motion to approve your financial report and also the court report, which is in your Dropbox. We have a motion from Misty, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Josie or Amy, I heard Amy.
Amy, give it to Amy.
So, so first that was where we have our checking too, right?
Yes.
Then he stepped out. Hey, is there a question, is follow-up, maybe Shannon will talk to you? Um, we got a lot of activity on our, this is non-investment related, but we had a lot of activity on our checking account over the last year. I mean, again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I would really love to know more, like, why we've had so many checks? That have been, you know, fraud. But what's going on, what are we doing to avoid that, you know, there, there's been several really large checks with First National. And so I, I, again, I don't need an answer to that, I just think that'd be interesting to understand, especially with amount, I mean, I think almost thirty or fifty thousand last time we talked, and we, we, we got it back, but there's been something that we've had to really dig into.
I can't really speak to like that side of the bank, I don't work on that side, but I can definitely at least inquire and have somebody kind of look in or make somebody who knows more about that.
There's signatures on there that like match theirs, and I'm like, okay, where are these checks being sent with their signatures? Because I want to track like what's happening. Is there, is it your system getting hacked, is it ours? Because I mean technically, I don't know if it's auto pay or what, but something's happening because it has your signature on it.
Yeah.
It looks like your signature. I think that's scary because that's happened four times in the last sixteen months.
Contact Sharon and have her get in touch with you guys.
It would even see that.
Again, no, just. You're, you're good, I think Sharon would be the best help to at least preliminarily.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you, so next are department reports, and I'm gonna bring Kayla up here. Talk about SmartGov. Yeah, good news for you.
Wow, I was.
What's up, Michael? Yeah, it's good news for you.
Read my mind.
I figured it was time to come back.
Oh, wait, turn that microphone, I forgot to turn it on. Sorry, there you go. There's that weekend.
Curious, so I put together this really short slide just to show you the features of SmartGov. We'll talk about the trials and tribulations I've been through and my staff has been through, and then where we are now. Okay, so we have an applicant portal where they can submit their documents and their resubitals for projects. We have a really cool feature where you can see your project number, and then the status sits in, and part of the reconfiguration that we went through, when we found out some things didn't get saved the first time around, was fixing our statuses so they make more sense. So if it's under staff review, the status will say, under staff review. If they need a resubital, it'll say, resubital required, so it's a lot better than what it was. Because it used to just say like in progress, it's like. They can pay fees from the portal now. And then I, one of the things that I think is really cool that we're allowing the system to do is the applicant can see exactly where they are in the process. So they can see that our department hasn't approved or looked at my submittal, and it's been two months, what happened?
This is the general contractor that would see this, right?
The applicants, the engineers, if the owner was person to access the portal, anybody that has access to the portal can see this stuff.
Awesome, okay.
That's super neat, you can keep going, Mr. Mayor. And we have a public access portal, we aren't fully configured on this yet, I did discover a problem while we were testing, where even if you turn off the don't show fees for the public, it's supposed to show if a project is owing fees. And I don't think that's in our best interest, so that's currently being off while they work on fixing that bug. But other than that, there's a compact section where they can report concern if they're like, my neighbor's grass is six feet high, can someone take a look at that or tell somebody about that? And they can do that there, they can request information, hey, what's going on at the corner of Keller and Ziva, what's going on right there? We can tell them, and if they have requests, they can track them here. When we get to use that public notice tab, we'll be able to put public notice for planning commission meetings. If there's something in town where you guys went on there, we're able to do that, and there's a map that will show you projects that are in progress. So you can find where Walgreens is and go and see what we know about what Walgreens is doing. So I thought all of that was really cool information that is more accessible to our public.
Do we share that on our website currently?
Not in the same way.
I mean, like, do we, is the public know about this?
Oh, yes, the, the link is currently on there, it's only on our planning page right now for applications, because we're still rolling it out through another bug that I found that we'll talk about, and that's why I haven't released it to the main page for public to be like, hey, come check out our planning projects. But it'll get there. One, Mr. Mayor. Project management, this was the biggest improvement from BSNA for planning. So administrative workflow, there are lots of tiny little tasks that you can do in a project, especially for our planning assistant to get a project out to everybody else. And with our public notice requirements, reporting a plat, all of those have really tiny steps that are really easy to miss, so this has an administrative workflow where we have built in actions, so someone can go in there and say, check, I did that, check, I did that. And you can't approve the overarching step until those, those actions have been complete. So you can't miss a step, SmartGov will not let you. Same thing with the review workflow, the way it's set up is the applicant has submittals, and those submittals are routed to whichever departments they need to see for review, so Public Works is not gonna have to look at the drainage report, they don't care about the drainage report in most cases, they can still access the drainage report if they're curious, but they don't have to give an opinion on it. Or give comments, and SmartGov will keep track of somebody denied a document, but somebody else approved the document, SmartGov will keep track and say, I need a new submittal because that document was denied by somebody. Once, these are super easy to track in here. Inspections, there is a SmartGo, a SmartGov mobile app where when you're onsite doing inspections, you can take pictures onsite, and it will go directly to SmartGov. Beforehand, we had to take pictures on our phones or your government, whatever you have, and then email it, and then drop it into the Dropbox or file and then upload it to BSA, so that everyone had access to it, this just makes it more streamlined. Potentially, Public Works has activity we'd like to get into SmartGov after having used it and be able to do their inspections on here, because there is a way that people can request inspections and it will keep their track.
How does, let's say, I know this has been something that's been called in the past from contractors. Let's say contractor gets an email, the, how many times is it alert? He or she, hey, you have a step to go back to.
So, the public, they'll only get an email when the status of their project changes.
Wrong, like for a builder, so like, let's say they had to return something in, and they did, how many times will it alert them and how often?
So it'll only email them when the step changes from in review to resubmit or required or approved, or whatever that is, if you're talking about for our staff, they won't get as many emails as we do now. Unless they ask for it, a lot of that stuff, they can set up a press floor.
So I'm a builder and I, I, I submit something, just you can't read it. And so, does it alert me, hey, this wasn't accepted, and, okay, let's send this that email. Does it send me another alert like two days later?
I don't think so.
I think that's been the, the challenge with some of the contractors is like, hey, I never got a second follow-up, so.
Work with contractors as much, that's more building department, but for our engineers, we're sending them emails anyways as follow-up, especially till everyone's had anything of it to go like, hey, put this on the portal, go check it out, take a look, see how you like it. But that email, contact from staff will still be happening if we haven't gotten a resubmittal, we can contact them, they can be having trouble using the portal. Are you just waiting for a project to be on hold, that's already standard for us. All right, business licenses, right now, Nicola did not have any kind of system to keep track of a business license, her handy-dandy Excel spreadsheet in her brain. This allows her to do initial applications, renew, and we've broken out the door-to-door permits. Because right now, all three of those things are on the same application, and there's some room for error in terms of calculating fees and stuff like that, which Nicola does a great job. This will just make it easier for her and take a lot of that extra work off of her shoulders. So. Hasn't tested it yet, been on vacation, but she gets back Thursday, I'm cornering her. I think that's the end of my slides, but I do have other tidbits of information. So during all of this, I have discovered a few bugs, one of the ones being the the fee showing when I don't want them to show, and then the other one was SmartGov will help keep track of due dates for our staff, so they know when reviews are due, because they have a two-week, when a submittal gets accepted, they have two weeks to review it, hopefully, we get to the point where it's not taking two weeks to do it, but really growing fast, so it's hard, but it keeps track of that due date, but right now, there's a bug where the permits that were migrated from BSA to SmartGov, they don't keep track of that due date unless I manually go in and force it to, so that's with the SmartGov engineering team to fix as well.
Do you have an update on when each of it can be fixed?
I don't have an update, they have to prioritize it, I'll get an update as they go through them, a lot of them I know have been escalated.
Say like, what, if you could estimate, what do you think it would be?
I have no idea, I asked to.
So, on that note, Brian, we talked about the contract structure and what they're gonna do to make this right after.
I have given a recommendation to the mayor, and I think he's reached out to, to the folks, and I think American advises to where they're at, I think they were up at.
Yeah, they, they offered to give us three months. I consulted with Brian and our team.
Three months what?
Yeah, well, yeah, and Brian's recommendation, just based on the contract and also where we're at, he told me to counter off him with six months, so that's what I did, they said they would escalate it up, and we haven't heard back yet.
Can we follow up on that and like?
Yes.
Put the heat on, I mean, they suck, I'm sorry. Another way.
Something.
I mean, so after we get this set up, like, are we gonna stay with them or do we need to look into something else?
I was under the same, that we're staying with them, it's up, it's running, it's working.
We've already invested.
I mean.
We invested so much time and energy.
Might as well buy the company at this point.
I think as long as we can get a credit, a substantial credit from them.
Yeah, Brian's recommendation was six months, and that sounds reasonable, and they, they act like you were going, I'll follow it up though, because I just said it like about a week and a half ago.
I mean, if they don't do six months, I'd say we probably need to escalate something even further, because it's been the work we've had to do has been. I don't think without.
For sure.
Going back to last year.
Yeah.
Beginning of last year.
They've delayed our team a lot, so. For the work you've done there.
Yeah, absolutely, more tidbits if you'd like to hear them.
Yes, please.
You can try, so they're working on our deficiency notice, which is basically our our comments of whatever middle they were on, right now, we're having to take comments from each department and put them into a pretty important document and then turn it into a to them, this will automate that report for us so that we are not having to do that and publish it to the portal. So they are fixing that report so it looks how I want it to look instead of the way it looked before, because it was ugly. And then, one more thing, part of our configuration process was fixing those statuses like I talked about at the beginning. So when, when projects were migrated over, they got migrated over as active instead of closed. Right now, if I were to give somebody access to the portal with their access code to their projects, there was one that was like, it showed them having twenty-six active projects, and they really don't have that many active projects, so we're getting that fixed, they're doing a postscript to get that done by next week, so that I can start giving people better access. I think that's it.
So with all of these new enhancements and everything, what is that doing for your team, is this giving you guys more time, like to focus your energy on something else, like, how I don't know, the work is. How great of a resource tool is this?
Efficient?
How efficient is this tool for, for you guys?
So right now, it's a little hard to tell because I'm still getting everything worked out, but I think it's been a super improvement because we're able to lay out all the little steps, so that even if you haven't done a process before, it's laid out very simply for someone to handle. All of our departments have started putting comments into SmartGov, and they seem to be able to navigate it pretty well, and I know I've heard at least departments say, I hate BSA, I don't know how to use it. So I haven't gotten that from them yet for this, so I think that's an improvement, I think the direct contact with engineers without having to do the handiwork to get there is really good, and I'm excited for the public connection as well. So I think in the long run, it'll be much more.
I know, the planning department specifically, you guys were running pretty lean, everything, is this tool helping you guys gain some time back where you can focus on other things?
I think it's streamlining the process so that we don't get far into a process and then realize we missed a step, because that ends up being more detrimental than anything else at this point.
So overall, it's a good investments?
I would say so. Now that we've gotten where we are, I feel a lot better about it. Oh, I did want to ask you guys, there is an option for you guys to have a read-only account to SmartGov so that you can go in, it's projects, yes, yes, everybody want one?
What?
Yes, please.
When and where?
I have somebody to set them up still, our go-live support ends October nineteenth, and that just means I won't have streamlined access to a consultant, we'll just have to go through normal support, so I have her till the end of next week, and I will have her set up your guys' accounts.
Whatever is easier.
It's easier just to do one, and we share it like, whatever is easier. I don't want to cause extra work.
Extra work for me. Any other questions for me?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, anything else on department reports? All right, moving on to public comment.
Oh, department reports, yes, I didn't look at the, up in animal shelter.
He's here.
Saw a lot of stuff stacked up there from the properties.
Oh, yeah.
So. Beautiful.
Yeah, hopefully that'll be out there before too long. As far as shelter projects go, the drains are installed, it has made a major improvement as far as the, being able to clean the kennels out. The epoxy is ninety percent done, they're gonna come back and roll on a top coat, I talked to them today, to kind of, kind of just finish it out where it all looks about the same. That on the inside was working out really well, as far as the cleanliness and the water, not being able to penetrate into the blocks. The dishwasher has been delivered. It's not installed yet, the, all of the ventilation hardware should be in at the end of this week. And then they will be installing, actually cutting the holes, doing the installation of the ventilation system next week. And then we'll have the electrician out there either at the very end of October, first November, start doing the wiring of everything in. But that'll be, after we get the dishwasher done and all the electrical and the ventilation, that'll be the actual hard projects that we will operate. And then the server has been delivered to IT company. IT is installing the base software, you know, the Windows server, SQL servers, some other things, and then and then what we're doing, since we have the, the more of the buzzed infrastructure at the police department, then they're actually gonna be promoting in to the police department, instead of trying to do it backwards way. Because they have a timer, and I have the bandwidth, I'll be able to host it on our system. But that should be done probably within, I said, about three weeks. And then we'll set up the training through Shelter Pro, train the shelter staff and myself and everybody else, police department who's part of the, the shelter on that, and we'll be up and running with the new software. Everybody's rolling.
And it looks like the, the total dog count was, that sounds terrible, I'm not making an objective.
So.
Thirteen in September? And like, so it's going, I mean, it's going down, August was a hundred and forty.
Correct, that's our total dogs that we have actually put, put hands on. Our total number in-house has been hovering between thirty-four, thirty-seven, but that's not including the ones we have out in foster, so we had up to eight out in foster at one time. So the adoptions are, are working well, one of our dogs that I was really concerned about, Axel, our German Shepherd, we actually found placement for him. That had been, been out there for two hundred and some days, so we found a good rescue for him to actually be able to go somewhere, do some training and find him a home instead of having to do something.
Really good.
Yeah.
So I was really happy with that, you know, making the contacts, tag, going to best friends for the rescue who took Axel, so things are working.
Awesome. How many foster homes do we use?
It depends, it varies on who's available at the time. The, the foster network is kind of all used by every shelter in the area, and every every foster kind of has a soft spot in their heart for certain breeds, so it just depends on who's available at that given time.
Also a personal story to share, coming home from church on Sunday, saw this, in Bentonville, where Alcambaro or Tractor Spies, there's a golden doodle that was just walking down the sidewalk and no person even close, I mean, crap all over it. Chased it all the way down to almost where AQ Chicken House used to be, and my church closed. The benefit in all this is the Bentonville guy came, really nice, explained the process, scanned chip, great, found the owner, it was a breeder in Ohio, they gave us the number to who bought it, tracked it to an address here locally, got him back to the home, but that made me think the importance of this, again, I, it's not topic, chip or no chip, but I thought that was great because he just picked up a deer, and there's blood everywhere, and so we actually took it, or needed to go to help out, but like, it was really helpful to have the chip be able to find.
That's the one thing that when we go live with the software, then we're gonna be integrating the chips, I've already, I've already sourced the chips. All I have to do is just make the order, but I obviously, it doesn't make any sense to make a large order until we actually have the software. But instead of tracking that, that many steps, when we actually do the chips into the adoptable animals, they will actually, we will do all the registration for them automatically, and it takes that step out of that process. And so it'll automatically upload everything, and so you won't have to play the three different phone calls to the breeder to where they're going, it'll actually, we'll do that for them.
Yeah, I think that's great.
It's all one, I mean, it's, it's, everything's gonna work, so.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was.
Pushing along.
Nice guy.
What is the lifetime, lifeline of a gift?
They don't, they don't expire, so, I mean, you're gonna, the, the batteries and everything else, it's not like a, like you would think a regular battery, because there are RFID technology, and so you're, it's a very small minute that is actually pulling off the chip. What I'm told, the chips will outlive the.
It's a static.
Correct. It's not like, yeah.
Great to just see it, I mean, cool to spit it out like that.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Bo get a foster.
Not yet.
Okay.
We're working with Bo to hopefully get him a, a placement, I'm gonna.
Bo's a, is that Bo?
He's our longest-term resident that we have, and we're working with Big Paws of the Ozarks with Bo, just getting him some training. Because he's actually a good dog after he calms down, it's just getting him to be calm is the hard part.
Saying Dixie Stampede gets a new dog from Prince, Missouri.
I'm all about it.
Get the ball, throw him out there in the middle of Dixie Stampede.
He might be like jumping on everybody's meals for the half of the show, but.
All he can do with it. He's a cute.
Anything else on department reports? All right, next is public comment. This is an opportunity if anybody wants to address the council, something may be on the agenda. Something maybe on the agenda or does anything, just not question answer period, when it's here to listen to comments. Uh, if you do want to speak, I'll I'll open it up. Uh, please approach the podium with your name and address and you have a three-minute time limit. Anybody wanna speak on a public comment? I'll start the time after you give your name and address.
Okay. Um, good evening, council, my name is Will Kelstrom and I'm here on behalf of Next Chapter Development, which is the developer that has been. Working on buying the rigs parcel, so the reason I'm here is to talk about item number fourteen. Um, there's gonna be a discussion about uh, water and sewer being sold to developments outside of the municipal limits. The reason I'm here is, uh, I don't know what Bob Anderson is gonna say, but I think it was prompted by our development, so. Um, I see that as a discussion item, I would love for y'all to allow me to get up and be part of that discussion. In short, I know I'm on a timer, so I'm trying to keep this brief. Um, we have been trying to annex this property through every combination of laws and property owners possible. For about the last year and what we're having to do is as a last resort, we are having to develop in the county. And we're trying to buy utilities from the city to be served outside municipal limits. Um, so if you guys would like to hear more about kind of this this s- story and struggles that we've been having with annexation. I would be happy to share that with y'all, so that's all I've got, um, I hope y'all call me back up for item fourteen.
Okay, moving on, public hearing or, yeah, public comments are closed. All right, next is now ordinances. And resolutions, so before we start with something like make a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine. Sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. And red motion twenty twenty-three dash forty-one by title only. And we have a motion, we have a second? We did have a second, okay, roll call, sir.
Mr. Elin?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
He taking both of them?
Yes.
Justin Calgar?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
And with something like make a motion. Uh, to suspend the rule required reading on three separate occasions on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine. Sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five.
So moved.
And we've got a motion by Josie, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Mr. Elin?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
Justin Calgar?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right, so and I have Kayla here from planning if we have any questions. Because mostly these are planning ordinances, so this first one is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine. This is actually amended in the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight that we approved last month. Uh, to admit a statement regarding accessory structures to be excluded from the buildable area. You guys think that, did that Kayla? Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. Uh, any questions on that?
If you got a really large accessory structure. From your lot coverage. You got a house that's covering thirty percent and then all of a sudden accessory structure is gonna cover another thirty percent. I mean, if you.
I think this is intended as. Essentially accessory structures for the most part, they can't be put in a setbacks if they're a. Permanent structure, have to get some kind to be able to do that. Um, what we're seeing is that based, because we just changed the setbacks for these. Um, the maximum building coverage was fifty-five percent and then with the. Um, setbacks, there wouldn't be any room left to put anything if you build your house.
Patch to the existing structure because.
Thank you.
Any more question? Good question.
City of Centerton ordinance summer two thousand twenty-three dash five nine and ordinance amending ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash five eight. Exhibit a error of omission of statement regarding accessory structures to be excluded from the buildable area requirement in the Center municipal code. Section fourteen point oh four point oh four subsection J residential townhouse two, RTH two. And subsection K residential townhouse five, RTH five. And declaring an emergency.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine.
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second? Second by Misty, roll call, sir.
Mr. Elin?
Yeah.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar? And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
There is emergency clause.
Section three, emergency clause, the city council, the city of Centerton, Arkansas hereby declares an emergency. And this ordinance being necessary due to the inability to enforce the conflicting requirements as stated in the current code. And shall be in full force effect from and after its passage and approval.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the emergency clause. A motion by Amy, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Keith, roll call.
Mr. Elin?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty and this is issuing water and sewer improvement bonds for. Centerton Utilities, I'm gonna let Bob Wright come up and talk about this, then after, then after. After Bob gives his presentation, uh, we will have a public hearing, we're required to have a public hearing. And it was published in the paper.
Mr. Mayor, appreciated, Bob Wright with crews and associates, and I know a number of your water sewer commissioners are back here as well to answer any questions. Uh, the ordinance that's uh, presented to you tonight is in regards to a. Uh, the most recent financing of the water sewer system uh, for seven million dollars, this was to finish out the bar and for other system improvements. Um, of funding that that handed out as this going around. Uh, if if we've gone through all the details with water sewer commission, but. Uh, we were able a a month ago before all these interest rates started to move on us, we were able to lock in the interest rate. Uh, with a ninety-day window lock, uh, and in so doing, and and the water sewer commission looked at at all of the au- uh, the. Options and alternatives. Uh, in so doing and in making that motion that saved your rate payers over five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Based on today's rates, so that rate was locked in before the movement. This first page just shows what is currently outstanding on the water sewer system. Um, and you can see, uh, you know, total borrowing rates as low as two point oh five percent, you know, we've, we've kind of. As the system has grown and the needs have been there, we've hit the market uh, when interest rates are historically low rates. This one alone uh, for seven million was at four point three four percent. Uh, that's all in when factoring all the cost of issuance, so that's the total debt uh, outstanding on the water sewer system. And then the last page just to show. You go through this uh, every meeting, water sewer commission, financially, how is the the system operating yet, are they efficiently operating the system? Uh, providing the the services and you can see that they collect revenues of twelve point nine million. Operate the system at nine point seven million, so they've got a an income level of three point uh, one six million. This was from your two thousand twenty-two audit. Uh, add back the depreciation and realization to to come to a conclusion, what did the system generate to pay the mortgage on the system? Five point three million. The uh, principal and interest of mortgage on the system of three point one billion. So a margin or a coverage of one point seven, very healthy number. Uh, shows the system is is collecting rates that are not uh, exorbitant, but collecting rates that is is providing a inefficient. Run system uh, and doing well. So with your approval tonight of the ordinance, the required, as the mayor said, the required public hearing to accept any comments, open and close that. With your approval of the ordinance, uh, that will allow us to wrap up the documentation and close. The transaction latter part of November for Thanksgiving. Where the funds will be available for the system to continue to expand and improve.
Any questions for Bob?
Yes, thank you, on your second page, um, you talk about the the number for the debt service coverage. One point seven for last year. Explain that number like, is that just sitting out there somewhere and?
And and that's a good, we look at every utility system, every type of financing to say. This system collects revenues, operate the system, you've got what's left over to pay your mortgage, pay your debt. Um, you've got a minimum requirement, a hundred and ten percent. That's the the minimum that you have to charge the rates and operate the system. Uh, so anything over and above that just increases your margins and and increases your efficiency. The higher the number, the the better, uh, obviously, let's say, you know, Beaver Water District, uh, they probably have ten times coverage. You know, that with the rates they collect, uh, it's a different animal, but there it's all across the board as far as what those coverage levels are.
Does that just sit out there though, I guess is my question? Like, what what are we doing with that money?
It's, so that excess is still used to go back in the system for any repairs, replacement, improvements. So if you ran your margins just razor thin, then every time there's a an improvement that's needed, you'd have to call me, which you do not want to do. So there is always a little bit of excess monies that that go back to, go back in the system right now, they're invested at, you know. Five something percent.
If I look at twenty twenty, there's an excess of one point seven, does that go back in? Twenty twenty-one?
That's correct.
It's still a safety stock though at the top, right?
That's kind of what I'm asking, is that just like a buffer, we don't do anything with it?
Basically, but it's still one point seven that at the time is not used.
Okay, let me, let me put it like this.
Oh, boy.
Uh, in addition to our bond credits. We now have a state law that requires that we put aside money. For maintenance and repair. And for, oh, uh, capital equipment.
But it's safety stock is what we're saying, it's it's it's.
I've been on the commission there, we were down at one point one two.
It was just, yeah, we were just asking if it was a rougher.
We try to structure the rates to minimize that coverage.
We don't use it, where does it go though?
Exactly, yeah, just roll over into the.
In the bank account. And we watch it very carefully. That's how we do, you know, that's what we could do to accomplish certain projects.
What's the bank account today, Bob? What's the bank account on today?
I don't have the balance sheet.
Well, so I guess, thanks, so let's, it was, it was one point eight twenty twenty. Let's say you roll that over one point twenty twenty-one and three point one twenty twenty-two, that's the sum of the two, where is like?
It's not a cumulative, I I, and I know what you're saying is, it's not, you're not taking the the excess in year one, rolling it over, then what's the excess? Each year is looked on an individual basis. So your margin in two thousand and twenty essentially was your debt back then was a million eight. And you had available three point one, she had a million three. Lots of excess that one year that you generated that went back into the bank account. For these requirements, capital repairs, future expansion, anything like that, the next.
Use all that on capital repairs and expansion, where does that go, does it just keep rolling?
It's in the balance, yeah, in the balance sheet, in the bank account.
Yeah, we budget for certain amount of capital repairs.
I'd be curious to know where it's at though.
Yeah, it's, yeah, what 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 is, what has generated a lot of this? Is a hundred percent.
If you build multifamily, it's gonna get worse.
Any more questions for Bob? Not hearing anyone.
I understand what you're saying, that makes sense.
At this point, we 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 have to have a public hearing, so something like make a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second and a third, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open, if anybody would like to come and and speak on this subject, please come to the podium and give your name and address. You want once? Once. I'd like my motion to close public hearing.
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anybody have any more questions before we take action on this? You're in any council? Oh, sorry.
Question. Will you direct me to where I can find these numbers?
Yes, ma'am, and on the audit, uh, on the balance sheet, show what the the cash accounts will be. And I'd be glad to to put together a detailed analysis and send out to the council.
Okay.
Uh, I can get that out tomorrow.
Yeah, or whenever, I, I mean, it's no rush, but I would like to see.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a good question, just to kind of show, show where it's invested and what, you know, what they've used for improvements in the past.
All right, thank you.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six zero, an ordinance authorized the issuance of a seven million dollar per amount, city of Centerton, Arkansas. Water and sewer improvement revenue bond, series two thousand twenty-three for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of certain improvements. Pledging water and sewer sewer revenues to pay the principal and interest on. Authorizing the execution of a letter of offer and representations for the purchase and sale of the bond. Authorize the trust did uh, indenture securing the bond and prescribing other managers pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty.
No move.
We have a motion by Keith, we have a second? Second by Misty, roll call, sir.
Mr. Elin? Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
We do have an emergency clause.
Section fourteen, emergency clause. It is hereby ascertained and declared that the sale of the bond must be accomplished and the improvements must be constructed or completed as soon as possible. To accommodate the needs of the city, its inhabitants and persons residing in the area to be served thereby, without which the life, health, safety and welfare thereof are jeopardized. And that the issuance of the bond and the taking of the other action authorized by this ordinance is necessary for the accomplishment thereof. It is therefore declared that emergency exists and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health and safety. Shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. This ordinance shall be effective from and after its date of adoption.
Someone like make a motion to adopt the emergency clause. We have a motion by Keith, we have a second? Second by Justin, roll call.
Mr. Elin? Darren Warren? Josie Reed?
Yes.
He taking both of them?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar? And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one, this is rezoning land. Belongs to Christie Rodriguez. Agriculture A one to low density residential R one. Uh, this is a two-acre parcel, it's off of Huber Road. Uh, this was heard at the last planning commission meeting. And the planning commission recommended uh, unanimously to the city council for approval. And there's, there's a map of where this property is, it's on the south side of our city. And then there's land use, land right next to it. And it's surrounded by low and medium density residential, so it's within the. Anybody have any questions?
All right, council. City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six one. An ordinance to rezon certain lands belonging to Christie B Rodriguez. Located in the city of Centerton, section six, township nineteen north, range thirty-one west of Benton County, Arkansas from. A one to low density residential R one.
So I'm only make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one.
Moved.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Elin? Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar? And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
This next ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two. This is correcting the street name spelling of Dylan Street. It was the first one listed to Dylan. D I L L O N Street on final plan of the Edgewood subdivision, which is is off of uh, Bush Road. Uh, the fire department and planning have been working together on this, uh, it was corrected, so this is just correcting the plan. Anybody have any questions?
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six two. An ordinance correcting the street name spelling of Dylan Street to Dylan Street. On the final plan of the Edgewood subdivision in the city of Centerton, Arkansas filed for record with the Benton County Recorder of Deeds and Records on August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Instrument number L two thousand twenty-three four four two four seven and declaring an emergency.
Someone like make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two.
No move.
And a second, roll call.
Mr. Elin?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Calgar? Amy Rochette, excuse me?
Yes.
All right, section three, emergency clause, the city council hereby determines that the correction of the spelling of Dylan Street. Is essential to the public welfare and must be corrected as quickly as possible. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage.
Someone like make a motion to adopt the emergency clause. Did I hear Josie second?
Yes.
Okay, is that, did I hear that? I heard something, okay.
Mr. Elon? Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins Botham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowker? And Amy Rochette?
Alright, this next ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three. This is a request to purchase six twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos from Nunley Chevrolet here in Bentonville or in Bentonville. Nunley has just started getting these vehicles. And we're gonna need, uh, looking at our sheets, we're gonna need six new vehicles next year, so what we would like to do is purchase these vehicles. And then we will replace the funds in next year's budget, we will make a line item to put the money back in the investor's account. Uh, these vehicles, uh, he'll get for thirty-nine thousand eight ninety each. All six of them are in stock on the ground, I've seen them over there. But the chief also wanted me to point out that that's this year's prices for next year. Here's the sheet and we got, uh, these same vehicles will be fifty-three thousand eight seventeen for next year. So we are getting a little bit cheaper via savings to the city. Uh, and, uh, and we will also budget for the equipment for next year's budget, too. We just want security since we had so much trouble getting these vehicles in the past.
Are we moving from Dodge to Chevy? We're trying to.
Yes.
I don't blame, I'm just asking.
The ownership, when you actually are over the whole life of the vehicle, GM, lowest cost of ownership. They are not the lowest initial cost, but over the lifetime of the vehicle, they come out to be the lowest cost of ownership of all the cars that are available. Uh, the the cost savings was just too much for me not to bring this up now, um, and so that's why I brought it to the mayor.
Anybody got any questions?
Yes, um, how, uh, how many, uh, Tahos have we purchased so far this year?
This year, um? Four?
Four, five?
Four, uh, we ordered the four, um, in this year's budget, uh, so we actually ordered those last year. I got the three from Iowa and we finally got one from Superior. Three, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, it finally came in just randomly, like it was just, we thought it was, we wrote it off and then they called us saying, hey, it's on the lot, so.
Yeah, I went back through my notes and since January, we
Four.
We ordered four and then in March we amended it and then in April we voted, so that's why I'm.
So it's still the four, is this we amended it going from buying all four from Superior to getting three of them from Iowa?
So if this passes, this will be a total of ten cars this year.
These are for next, these are like what we're budgeting for for next year. The reason why I'm bringing it up now is because it's fourteen thousand dollars savings now.
Buying them this year, out of this year's budget.
Well, yes, and then we'll replace the funds out of the budget of the funds for next year.
Hold on, no, 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 I don't think that, yeah, I think I said last week, we, when do we pay?
We have to pay now.
When do we expect them? No, next year.
A lot, we can pick them up whenever, it's just they're there.
How how many, sorry, I didn't.
No, I interrupted you, go ahead.
How many, um, how many officers, uh, have a car? Or or I don't know if I'm saying that right.
How many don't?
Um, like how many cars do we have in service, maybe is the better question?
Well, in in full service, I have one, I have thirty cars, but that includes, uh, two of the vehicles that have over a hundred thousand miles that are in a part-time fleet, that those cars will be cycled out and then roll, you know, keep on taking the cars down the list into the part-time fleet.
Are we still, um, I know I'd asked you this question last year, I think it was, I would have to read my notes. Are you still seeing that we're purchasing on an average about four cars per year?
So.
Kind of go up with the amount of officers maybe that we're getting?
Every year's a little bit different, um, it just depends on what we did, what we did add in that year. Um, it depends on what is rotating out, as far as, I would say on average, it's probably gonna be four cars. Um, now, we're, this year is just one of the years we hit and we bought more cars that one year and they're just cycling out due to age.
So how much, um, um, I guess I can go back and look in into your budget, but why are we not using this year's budget? Why are we taking, why are we purchasing cars now and then paying with it with next year's budget?
We have to pay for the cars now, it's just.
And we don't have enough in the budget to pay for now?
I won't have, I don't have this money budgeted for this year.
Forty-five thousand?
Or no?
Thirty-nine thousand eight thirty-nine per Tahoe.
Oh, there I see, yeah, sorry, yep.
Fucking two hundred.
Question, what's the, this is gonna be, what's the ratio of car to officer in the field, I mean, active? Like how many active cars, how many active officers?
One to one.
One to one, do you think, do you think it's worth taking oldest in the, this may be a really dumb question? Is it worth taking oldest in the fleet, so those eight thousand mile vehicles are taking some of these newer Dodges and trying to get the value now while the market's still a little okay to resell and swap them?
I can do the research on that, know a hundred percent if that, until I, until I actually do the research and provide you that. That's the question, I I don't know, um, but I can do the research and find out what the current value of those vehicles will be and see where the it would be a, while, you know, looking at, I just don't know that I'm.
This is probably something tricky, we just don't pit the vehicles out at the curb with the sign on it says forty thousand. We access them, we put them out to auction.
And we don't put them out to auction, let's sell the sucker.
Well, they go, so.
Ten thousand or we give fifty thousand, you know, when someone bids on it, so you got, I mean, is that not what we're required to do? We can't just put a price cap on them.
Good point, Darren.
So we can either, we can either trade them in.
I mean, if we can trade them in, I guess that's where the benefit comes from, being able to trade them in.
Yeah, but who's gonna think?
Probably, you're probably not gonna do it, I mean, they'll they'll trade them, I just don't know what they.
Would we, we probably get more money selling it than we would trade it, I know, let's be honest, trading in personal cars.
Yeah, unless you, unless you have a vehicle like a pickup truck, now they're going for what you buy a new one.
I probably get what we would have paid for them originally right now for the low mileage ones. It's just you're gonna turn around and spend fifty thousand dollars. And that's the part where I, I could, I don't know that answer right now, I should do the research.
Are some of the vehicles that you're phasing out, are they high maintenance cars?
So they 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 are, they're the Ford that we, when we switched over to the Fords there, because we couldn't find anything about the Fords in those few years. Um, those are the ones that were, um, cycling out, but the Fords, so GM is lowest cost, Ford's the second, Dodge is your overall highest cost of ownership. So it's, they're not terrible right now, uh, just trying to stay ahead of that is better. It doesn't eat eat us alive in vehicle maintenance. Um, just, uh, for instance, you know, uh, last year I spent seventy some thousand dollars on vehicle maintenance. Uh, historically for this year, I'll spend maybe forty. So with not having an aging fleet, our vehicle maintenance goes substantially down.
So what is the total savings on it this year's price and do what you don't actually?
They were forty-eight in January.
Yes, but these are, these are some of the Nunley, um, we did not think that they were, they were actually gonna get back into the fleet sales and they did, and the pricing they came back with was just unheard of. Um, so just between, say forty thousand dollars, so we're saving, if we buy these six, we're saving twelve thousand dollars per Tahoe compared to what we know they'll cost next year. Seventy.
Predicted.
Seventy-two thousand.
I I I guess about seventy-eight thousand savings between bottom of the year versus waiting.
Free cars.
Next year.
You get two free cars.
That was the state bid, was that where you pulled that from?
So that is actually the pricing that we got straight from Superior, um, they are the ones that up until Nunley, one in the area that was purchasing the vehicles. The biggest difference is, we were told, um, at the fleet show that GM was lowering the concession, which everybody's lowering their concession, they're giving to government. Uh, last year's concession was fifty-one fifty, uh, per vehicle, uh, when we did the math on it this year, seventeen, next year for twenty-four is seventeen hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that's what you see on, um, on the two prices, the fifty-four thousand and the fifty-two, that's the GM concession. Um, so you see this year's, it's fifty-one fifty that Chevrolet or GM is giving off of the price of the Tahos. The, but the sheet from, uh, Superior for next year, this, the concession's only seventeen. So that's the difference when there's two numbers, the fifty-three eight seventeen and the fifty-two one fifty-seven, that's the concession that the GM provides the government, and so that's one of the big increases on the pricing.
Got to cut down somewhere for what the vice increase for wages are gonna have to.
Two, two more questions. Last question, I'm showing your budget right now at a million, correct? So you're seventy percent through your budget, which is great. Are you expecting for the remainder of the year, the next three months, to take that down to zero?
I'll, I'll be very close to it, yes, ma'am. Because there's, there's a lot of operating costs that's still coming in three months.
Okay, that's fair, and then, so my, um, second question, so I want to make sure I understand this, I am not a fan of essentially borrowing money from, from the future to now. I always like to operate, let's stay with what we have right now. So if, am I understanding that we're asking, you're asking for us to okay this, and then when we, you'll put it in the budget for next year?
It's just to make the, make the balance sheets look correct as far as in the city. Now, the city has the money to pay for these vehicles, no problem. I mean, that's not the issue, it's just we're, you know, showing that this is what we're budgeting for. And then this is what's going back over here to the general counter, the investor, whatever comes out of, it's just a, a wash.
Is Matt planning on buying anything?
That's not the way people would look at it, though, if we don't have the money to buy it right now.
But we, we do.
Okay, then let's buy them now, I have no problem with that, but let's keep it straight, not say, well, we're gonna take it out of next year's budget, I I think that sounds a little bit. Say that you're gonna lower his budget by two hundred and forty thousand next year and leave that line out on.
Essentially, yes.
Let's word it a little bit differently then, because it sounds, you know, that's, we'll do it that way.
I think the, the main thing is we're holding him accountable in next year's budget for the vehicles that we have, the funds to pay for it this time.
And just making a total picture here, is Matt trying to bring anything November summer, just wanna make sure we're thinking total budget here?
No, that's there, he he he'll go on there if you have any questions.
I'm making sure, I mean, thank you.
We we'll probably bring a ladder truck, but we ain't gonna have to pay no money up front.
Just, that's ten cars for this year, correct?
Correct.
Zero cars for next year.
Zero cars for next year?
Yes, these are next year's cars.
So while we even talking next year's budget, why aren't we just doing a budget adjustment this year to the police department to purchase these six vehicles, knowing that they're gonna get zero vehicles next year unless they have an accident, which
That's essentially what we're doing.
I mean, why even mess with putting it at a line item for next year's budget, why don't we just do a budget adjustment for this year?
But I'm just trying to keep the wording and everything straight, so the public doesn't think, you know, it it sounds a little bit different, we're gonna take it from this budget, put it in this budget.
Trying to explain in that we understand it, I'm asking for something that potentially we're going to be using.
We've got the money in the general fund, we just do a budget adjustment, add on to their capital expenses for six new vehicles for this year.
That's, that's what we're, that's exactly what we.
How much more is it gonna cost to outfit them?
Uh, the the cost, so making some of the other contacts and things, I'm actually lowering some of our, our costs on our equipment. Um, through some contacts with federal signals, um, and getting away from our current vendor that we've had some issues with. So ultimately, I'll, I'll be, I'll save about fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars a vehicle.
My understanding is that we're gonna buy these vehicles and not outfit them till next year.
I mean, we're taking out a budget this year, why not just go and do it?
I, I, I think, let's just look at doing the whole deal, get them in, we can probably get more, uh, more money for the vehicles that we're getting out if we go ahead and surplus as soon as we can.
The, the vehicles that we have that we're surplusing already have the, the high, I mean, they're nothing right home about, I mean, they're vehicles that have hundred some thousand miles plus.
My, my opinion is let's go ahead and get them outfitted and get them on the road. If we're gonna buy them, I don't, I don't see letting them sit. That's probably the worst thing to do on a vehicle, so.
I can, no, I'll just, I don't know if, if I can, if I have the time to accomplish that in this quarter. Just because how, I I still have two vehicles that aren't even, certainly aren't even out in full, um, you know, called parade ready, because I still am waiting on the equipment, so I can't guarantee that that's gonna happen.
Okay, well, that's, I guess, I guess my
I, I, yes, I mean.
Just let's go ahead and, and get everything ordered, get everything ready, and then when they get in, everything comes in, let's get them on the road.
No, I, I think we need to put that, like, let's, let's not carry it over to next year's budget, let's do it now.
That's what I'm saying, let's do it all at one time.
Uh, I'm trying to tie things together here, related but related. Is there a way, do you think if we put some stickers on the back of the cop car, like about our website or adopting a pet, you think it would help drive some adoptions? I mean, that's the best advertising thing out there for, I was just trying to think of something out there to promote what we have with.
We actually get the software up, it'll actually automatically post us to the social media platforms that uh, we select and also the various adoption websites, um, absolutely, um, we've actually talked about having some uh, with our local vendor and doing like actual like window stickers, like the ones you can peel on and off for like our dogs. So obviously, we don't want, you know, axle on our cars, because axles, you know, out.
No, but I think if a website comes to your dogs or whatever, I think that helps, it's the best ad out there.
Maybe a local vendor is willing to help us out doing this.
Remind me again, how many vehicles we're surplusing?
Next year, uh, it'll be at least five. Yeah, you'd say I'd be requesting that anyway.
We talked about it back in April, but there was no specific number on it, it just said multiple.
Right, and it all depends on what we're able to find and if.
Did we already do those ones from April?
Yes.
Okay.
I have the, the one Tahoe stills back there, um, but I've gotta get decommissioned, uh, completely, and then I have to bring the Kia up and see if it's even gonna start. Um, it's still back there just because it's got flat tires and it doesn't run very well, it's a seizure car, that's not good for anything.
We do pretty good on Capitol, so. We do very well.
I'm just watching, I know.
We do very well. Better than I thought.
But to, to Keith's point, I think the equipment obviously needs to fall into this year.
That would give me the ability to go ahead and order, I just don't, until I actually make the orders and start talking to the vendor, I'm not, I don't know what the lead time's gonna be.
I think it's just the more amount of the financial piece, seeing it clear versus having to drag this into twenty twenty-four.
Well, we can get to it, though, in the next quarter, in the next three months.
Anything else on, on this?
Ordnance number two thousand twenty-three dash six three, an ordinance waiving bidding requirements for the purchase of six two thousand twenty-three Chevrolet Tahos from Nunley Chevrolet, Bentonville, Arkansas, for the Centerville Police Department.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three.
So, second.
Mr. The motion, second by Keith, roll call, sir.
Mr. Elon? Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins Botham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowker?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes, as long as it stays within this, this year's budget.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four. And this is dedication right away, Cox Development LLC. And this property is located, uh, this is part of a track split, and this property is located at Second and Fair Street in, uh, in the old downtown area, so they've dedicated a little bit right away on Second Street, a little bit off. Any questions here?
City of Centerville ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six four, an ordinance accepting dedication right away by Cox Development LLC. Per plant titled lots one and two, Cox addition of partial number six, uh, zero 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 eight one zero zero zero. For property located in part of the southeast quarter of the, of section thirty-three, township twenty-four, thirty-one west, City of Centerville, Benton County, Arkansas.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Elon? Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins Botham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowker?
Yes.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Alright, next, final ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five. This is accepting dedication right away from Christie Rodriguez, this is the same property we just did, uh, the rezon on a minute ago. And they've also done a track split, so they are dedicating right away on Huber Road. Any questions on this? You're none, councilor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I was, it's on the, okay, okay. Uh, City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash six-five. And ordinance accepting dedication right away by Christie Rodriguez per plant titled lot split, creating, uh, creating lots five A and five B of parcel number zero six zero 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 four seven eight six two for property located in part of the south half, the southeast one quarter of Township Nineteen North Range Thirty-One West, City of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five.
I have.
Make a motion, second. Rule call, sir.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins-Boston?
Yes, sure.
Justin Cowher? And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right. One and only resolution is resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-one. This is just set in a public hearing uh, for the creation of a drainage and utility easement located on lot twenty-seven, Versailles Subdivision. Uh, which is fourteen hundred La Chesney Drive. And this public hearing will be set for the next council meeting on fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-three. Any questions? You're ready, okay.
City of Centerton Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-three dash four-one. A resolution saying a public hearing to discuss the vacation of a drainage and utility easement located on lot twenty-seven of Versailles Subdivision. Also known as fourteen hundred, uh, La Chesney Drive, City of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
So I'm gonna make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-one. Motion, we have a second too? You have a second time? Rule call.
Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Keith Higgins-Boston?
Yes, sure.
Justin Cowher?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
All right. Next is, uh, we did, uh, you authorized me to put out recommendations for underwriting services to help us. That was fun, a community center for the community. So I did do that, I did get two responses back. Uh, which I did ask you guys to review, and I have representatives from both of them here. I have received from Stevens and Cruz and Associates, uh, this is the same, right? And then I also received, uh, Raymond James. So I think this time, I, I will let them present. Probably, I'll have one of them go outside. There, if you go outside that door, there's a chair, there's some chairs outside there. And then we'll come get you when you're done, and we'll just swap. And then at the end, the council can hear both presentations and then make a decision which one we'd like to, you know, to hire. I, I did ask them all to prevent, to provide a written copy, which they did. And like I said, it's in the Dropbox, and, uh, introduce Kevin. Or Bob, whoever's gonna do it, and they've both been advising. They've both been advising, we'll, each presentation in ten minutes or less. Is that good?
I'm gonna hand out something to Leanne Burnett, who's, uh, gonna turn our public finance department's gonna kind of lead off, and we're just gonna kind of tag team it, mayor, if that's okay.
So he answers it, I'll start your time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Where everybody gets an equal amount.
My timer just.
I got it too. I got the official, hey, your timer don't count. I got the official timer. My, my timer's the only one that counts. You ever watch Judy? My opinion's what it counts.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. As Kevin said, my name is Leanne Burnett. I am with Stevens. And we are headquartered in Little Rock, in one of that office. I was recently named, uh, the incoming head of public finance effective January first. And I wanted to be here tonight to, to let you know that part of my role as head of public finance, I'm in charge with allocating resources of the firm. We're very excited about the growth that Centerton has experienced over the last several years. I actually met with your prior finance director a couple of times. Um, and so I just want you to know that we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We have partnered with Cruz and Associates. Combined, you're looking at Arkansas firm with over a hundred and fifty years or more of experience. Um, and Stevens, in fact, has been ranked nationally with sales and use tax bonds. Uh, they are different, they are complex. And they are a great resource for your city to use to plan for the incredible growth that you've experienced. I'm gonna hand it over to Kevin. Who's in our Fayetteville office.
Thanks, Leanne, and, and mayor, I also appreciate the opportunity to be here, as Leanne said. Um, we handed out a little bit of, more of a, kind of a summary, uh, based on what you've already seen. As Leanne said, we have over a hundred and fifty years of experience, um, in our two firms. I'm gonna go through a few of these pages with you, just to point out some things. Um, if the answer is a paper, you're gonna rock. Uh, we're out of nineteen thirty-three, I'm, I'm out of Fayetteville office, so that's one of the things that you think, uh, gives us a distinct advantage over competitors is clients. Uh, if you'll turn over to page six, as Leanne mentioned. Stevens in particular is ranked, uh, has, uh, national rankings of sales and use tax bonds. You can see we rank fourth nationwide in underwriting and bank贷款 sales and tax bonds. Uh, as of September one, twenty twenty-three, and rank sixth nationally, uh, uh, based on number of issues sold, and then nationally based on par amount, so the principal amount of the bond issues. Uh, collectively between our two firms. Uh, we rent first in Arkansas and underwriting and sales and use tax bonds basically every year. Um, and you can see at the bottom, some of the, some of the transactions, uh, look at the floor, blue stones. If you flip on page seven, um, you'll note it. And since two thousand, uh, nineteen, the Northwest Arkansas issuers that either either both together are firms, or each of us, presumably. Um, as Bob and I were talking today, and Leanne as well. Between our two firms, we've probably served every single city in Northwest Arkansas, with the exception of Centerton actually, uh, for sales and use tax bonds. I know Bob's and your, your learn, sir, work for many years. Paid presentations before Stevens has, but have not been selected. Um, but quite frankly, between our two firms, um, me personally, I do more sales tax work probably than any banker in the entire state. Terms of number of issues sold and par amount. Um, you can see on page eight, uh, one of the other things that we, that makes us stand out is just the number of reps in Arkansas. You can see how combined it's the health, rest of the state compared to us as far as salespeople are concerned. And at the end of the day, assuming we selected a new, I write the bond, and then place them um, the number of sales folks, we think translates into what's most important to initiate, which is lower interest rates, just because our sales force is so, so large. You're investors. So with that, I'm gonna let Bob kind of finish up and talk a little bit about them now.
Mayor, my unofficial clock chokes five forty-six while we talk quickly. Uh, as Leanne said at the very beginning, sales tax issues are very complex. It's, uh, water and sewer is a different animal. Um, and as Kevin said, we've worked with, uh, either individually, individually or combined every issuer up here Northwest Arkansas, their issuer in the state. Um, there's reasons why we wanted to combine forces, uh, and it's the, the fast-growing cities in Arkansas need that experience to come in and show you all the options, uh, and bring that wealth of experience to, to bring to your taxpayers, the most efficient financing you can get. Uh, as Kevin said, I just briefly wanted to look, so we spoke, uh, spoken with the mayor on, on what the, the thoughts and the needs are uh, going forward for your next project. Page ten is just briefly, what is your sales tax done? You know what it's done over the last number of years. Planted a million three seventy back in two thousand eighteen, the trailing twelve months on that one sit tax has been two point eight nine million dollars. Um, some of the, of the other potential tax generators that are, that are coming up into this area, uh, we expect that tax to continue to grow. So you've got a, a lot of opportunity there. Page eleven, uh, you're looking at currently the system, the city has three sales tax issues outstanding, two that were issued in two thousand seventeen and a small one, uh, from two thousand twenty-one. One of the smaller ones has actually been paid off. Uh, the interest rates on the far right side, you can see are, are very good rate. Nine out to three point five five percent. So that's what you're paying off right now. Back in two thousand and seventeen, went back to voters, they approved a myriad of projects.
What page?
Uh, well, actually, this is my pencil scratch. Um, but I, I just, this tax has been out since two thousand five. You've done a lot with that tax. You've done parks, you've done this beautiful complex, uh, police, emergency services, uh, flyer, you partnered with RDOT on Highway one oh two. You've done, you've used that, that tax, uh, and been good stewards of that tax for your citizens since two thousand five. So the thought is to go back to the voters to say, here's what we've done with this tax, here's what we want to do continuing forward. In seventeen, they approved, um, the admin building that we see here, uh, fifteen point eight million for streets, uh, four point two million for parks, and a million, uh, each for fire and police. There is still about sixteen million, uh, in voter-approved allocation that has not been issued yet. Um, so you still have that, that, that we need to sit down with the city to look, what is the best use? Do you want to go out, uh, and try to lock that in? Uh, currently, before you go to voters, or you want to mix that all in together when you go back to the voters at March? There's a lot of complexities to that, that we need to look at those options. But knowing that you have some unallocated and unsold bonds still out there, the, the big driver, um, on what the city's looking to do is the new community facility, which is, uh, what, uh, around twenty-five million. Uh, so if the, the summary of looking at numbers on page twelve, um, is, is essentially, right now, trailing twelve-month collections, you can issue about thirty-seven point one million dollars par amount in total debt.
You mean, so in, in my terms, that's what we're able to borrow essentially, isn't it?
Yeah, so going back to the water sewer, and then based on the coverage, your, your ability to afford with the two point eight million dollars of your trailing twelve-month tax collections, when you look at that and build in a margin of, of security of one point two percent, that tells you in today's interest rate environment, you can borrow thirty-seven point one billion. Um, again, that's, that's out thirty years, you would refund the existing debt, um, that would provide construction funds of thirty-three million in today's dollars. That doesn't quite get you to what the total that's voter right now, plus the additional twenty-five million you're needing from the community center. It's about eight million dollars short in today's market. But just for instance, in the last four weeks, what, what interest rates have done, why I even brought it up on the water of sewer, how much we saved by locking in that rate. Uh, we've lost about two million dollars in borrowing capacity just in the last month. And again, that's, that's, everything is driving interest rates, the economy and such like that. Um, so timing is, is critical as to when we do this. Uh, going and, and educating your voters as to what you've done with it, what you plan to do with it. Uh, you can certainly approve up to the full now that you know you can get, uh, the streets, the remaining parks, et cetera, the community center. You might have to hit it in a couple of different series over years as the tax grows. Uh, but that's something we have to build into your financing package. So we wanted to take the opportunity to, to present this, just to say that, um, our experience, our team, uh, to come and work with you. Uh, we appreciate the time. Uh, we would like to sit down, kind of get into the real details of this. Uh, present to you. Kevin said, I'm in Fayetteville, he's in Fayetteville. Uh, anytime you have a meeting, we're gonna be here thirty minutes or forty-five if it's rush hour traffic. So thank you for your time, and if there's any questions afterwards, we would certainly like to.
Yeah, hey, one question in here. Yeah, right, do you have any questions, Frank? So thirty-seven million was the, basically the affordability as of right now, and what was the thirty-three million construction again?
Thirty-three would be the construction, so you've got some, um, some requirements to, to, if you're using the same tax that you would pay off. Um, that you would pay off the existing debt of a little over three million. So that's why the new money can, uh, portion comes in at about thirty-three.
That's the, basically allowable amount going forward. Okay, right.
Interest earnings these days, you're gonna earn probably.
We, we talked some numbers, and but that's how, I mean, that's a lot of money, but yeah, I just wanted to try and show what that meant. And Cheryl?
Bankers, thank you.
No, I do think it's important though for all to look at the, the schedule of events, like understanding that, I mean, that is.
It's a pretty good timeline if you want to do this in March. Um, yeah, I think December nineteenth is about the drop dead date.
We want to bring an ordinance to the December council.
You know, there's a lot to be done to, to, you know, and then.
Yeah, that's why we put that.
We got two months, that's why I did this now.
Yep. But that's exactly why we're the counter, so you all were aware, and I know where the mayor is, but it's a pretty short one.
Very short, yes. I just started talking about.
Is that it?
Oh, Gerald's coming.
Oh, they have to stay outside while they're presenting?
They do, or they're just in Holland.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna give you ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay.
Enough time? And then, and then after you speak, and if they have any questions for you, they can ask after, after ten minutes, or during, I don't, however you want to do it. As soon as you start, I'll start the time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, for allowing us to present and reconsidered. Um, I'll start with just going through the high points in the letter, and then touching a few other items throughout the presentation and a few things in the presentation. And, uh, then, uh, open for questions whenever you have them. Feel free to ask. Um, so, um, any of you are probably very familiar with us, cause we've been working with Centerton since nineteen ninety-nine on the sales tax side, and did a water and sewer bond for you in twenty fourteen. Uh, we worked through the twenty seventeen, uh, so, on the sales tax, to get that last authorization. Million. And, uh, I was personally involved in the last two bond issues. I started, um, I've been with Raymond James for, uh, what, four years, and so I was on the twenty twenty and the twenty twenty-one bond issues, um, uh, kind of behind the scenes, but I was still here and, uh, participated in that nature, so, um, on the letter, just to kind of tell you a little bit about, if you know how familiar you are with our whole service securities firm. We are a top five national underwriter of bonds, and, uh, based on number of transactions. We also have a very in-depth experience with sales taxes across the country as well. And in the last five years, we've done a hundred and ten sales tax deals as senior manager. Um, for an aggregate par amount of three point five billion, and that's a lot of numbers and may not mean that much to you, but that that shows that we're in the market every single day, and we just, investors are looking for. And we are able to very accurately price and go in on, on the day of sales of your bonds and, uh, give a possible rate for you, so that matters to you. And we have a very strong middle market presence. Uh, we have dedicated on basically those that sell your bond, and they are dedicated to the middle market, and we also have a very large retail distribution network. We have over eighty-seven hundred financial advisors across the country, and so they are working to basically help individuals buy those bonds. And so we, we sort of take a different approach than most firms in that we are going after the large tier, but then we're in the middle market and the, uh, individual buyers. Uh, again, all to help third down the sides of the, the interest rate on your bonds. Um, so a couple of things I just wanted to touch base on, um, the firm is very committed to public finance. Um, I'm in the Little Rock office, um, I'm committed to Northwest Arkansas. Most of you met, uh, my colleague who just recently moved here in July, so we now have a public finance office in Bentonville. Um, and then I'm personally, uh, interested in the development of this area as well. Uh, we bought a house in Fayetteville for the son, and I have a nephew that actually lives in Centerton. That's not hugely important, but I just want you to know that I'm personally invested in Northwest Arkansas as well. Um, so we have fourteen offices. If you look on the map on page three, you can see the bond issues that we've done for Centerton. I'm going back to nineteen ninety-nine. And it's, we take an approach on each individual bond issue, we will determine if a rating is needed, and you can see sometimes we rate it, we receive a rating on the bonds, and sometimes we decided to issue them without getting a rating. And, um, also insurance. Um, so we're looking at each individual bond issue and trying to determine what the best possible, um, structure is and how we go about selling those bonds. Um, and in the, on the map, you can see we have fourteen offices on the I forty-nine corridor between Fayetteville to Bella Vista. Um, and in the, on the map, you can see we have fourteen offices on the I forty-nine corridor between Fayetteville to Bella Vista. So um, obviously, most of those are the financial advisors that are helping people invest their funny, money IRAs and. All right, I'm not wanting to take too much time uh on page six. So in the time, you haven't issued a sales tax bond, and it's twenty twenty-one. But despite that, I have uh maintained constant interaction and, and communication with the mayor and some of you. And uh, the finance directors that have been here and worked with, you know, basically keeping you informed of when those bonds are gonna pay off. To make sure that um you're able to issue bonds before those sales tax, because once they get paid off, they go away essentially, so. Um, so I have done that, and you can see here that each of the outstanding bond, sales tax bonds twenty seventeen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Um, will pay off in the next, projected to pay off in the next three years. Um, with twenty twenty um paying off next month. So um, the good thing is the one percent bond tax that y'all have is. The, you guys have done a wonderful job with, uh, that is growing exponentially. So you have lots of room to issue additional debt without causing um any of your additional bonds test or any of that. Like they've mentioned earlier with the water sewer bonds, your debt service coverage, you know, that matters on these bonds just the same. So on uh, we currently have a hundred or one point two five times debt service coverage additional bonds test. On Nathan, but we can look at that to see if that's something um because of your growth, if we can lower that. So there's a lot of things that we can do to determine um, you know, how to move forward. Um, and you do have the capacity to issue the remaining sixteen point eight million that the voters already approved. Uh, of course, you're gonna have to have them re-bought that, um, when they bought the uh new project. And the additional approximately twenty-five million for the proposed project, um, assuming current rates. Obviously, uh, the federal government has decided to keep rates higher for longer. So um, they did pause, and so we'll see what they do, um, they're expected to raise them again before they end of the year, so. Um, just a few, how much time do I have left? I don't wanna rush, but I wanna make sure I get to every.
Very bad. Twenty seconds.
I wanna leave questions as well, so. Okay, with your question.
How does the, this is more, how does the payments work, so like we borrow the money, but like on the current bonds, how often are payments, are they quarterly, monthly, how does that work?
They're paid monthly by, by one cent sales tax.
And I'm guessing we, do we overpay that amount every month, is that why we're paying it off early? How much percent of, what's the minimum payment do we pay above, do we have?
She, she probably.
Know the percentage, but there's a calculation that's done, so you guys don't even actually see those. They're collected and then sent to the trustee that you have, and then they're making payments on those. And so there's calculation they do to basically retain some enough to make sure just in case that you have a.
I just didn't know, yeah, I didn't know what's above that we paid.
And, and they're set up, they're designed to work that way, where you have a mandatory redemption period. So we always calculate what they're, what, if you just made your payment, when those will pay off. And then we periodically update that show when it's projected to pay off. On page fifteen, I just wanna point out that um we have the capacity to write fourteen point five billion dollars. And what that means is that let's say, um, we go to issue your bonds and we hit. You know, a horrible market, something going on, totally, uh, or whatever, uh. Um, but in, in the markets terrible, we're not able to sell your bonds. Raymond James has done a very good job of taking those bonds in-house. And a lot of times, and very frequently, a majority of the time, um, taking those at the rate that we. Had basically given you the date before. So that's something that a lot of firms are not willing to do, and we are absolutely willing to do that and have proven that we will do that, so I wanted to point that out. And uh, we also have additional services that we offer that I wanted to mention. Since you are in the bond market a lot, you probably don't need the bonds one-on-one, but that's something that we offer. Um, to where we can help council members or any uh new staff by sort of explaining the whole process. I've done that for a lot of, of our, our clients. Um, and I think it's very helpful if they haven't met their bond issue before. Um, in addition, we have an investor strategy group that can help um. Basically bid any of your project funds or any of the funds really, but especially bond funds. And uh, get those short-term rates that are so high right now and be able to uh basically stretch your dollars. By investing them um in the short term and, and making sure they're available by doing a ladder. And uh, matching it to the draws that you'll have. And then in addition to that, we have what's called dissemination agent services, which is a lot of words. So, so some of you may realize we have to do continuing disclosure um on. It's sort of tedious, I'll say, for your staff, but that is a, a service that we now offer. Any questions? Information in a short time.
Well, do we want them to stay outside, we can discuss, or y'all can discuss, or you want them to come back in the room? That, that to you. You want them to just sit out there and we'll get them when you. Yeah, yeah, we need to make, make this, it's nice that we move forward.
Discuss it real quick.
Okay, here, this, I will, I'll come out, well, somebody will come get you.
Thank you, thank you.
Come get you all in a minute.
Right, this is currently what we have with Stevens and then.
Stevens, Stevens is pretty much one of the. And then she's pretty much done all our bonds. We, we've had a great relationship.
We got a great track.
And she works with Shannon quite a bit, like on reporting, you know, because like she talked about at the end, re- reporting, she had to help. You know, we had, we had to work through that, and they're very accessible to us, so.
What's the downside, like insurance, the same, everything else, like is there anything that would be different financially, on either?
Well, I think the rates would probably be, probably the same, you know, depending on what the market is and stuff, so.
Man, is the timeline appropriate for what they showed us for her too, though?
Maybe the same.
That might be the same. And then she, she's actually, during the time, she's actually providing us updates, like once a year, she'll give them to us, and say, here's where you guys are at and stuff, so.
Can you show she's accessible?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I like the little.
We, we, this, we've been able to talk to them anytime we've needed to.
Yeah, we should have just played all that. And, and a plus out of all this, I mean, everybody still gets something because they're gonna get the water sewer. You know, a, and, and if you decide, whichever one you decide, you know, both of them will get one.
I didn't quite understand the first security slash, what was the deal there, the partnership?
Merge.
Oh, yeah, they're merged together. It used to be Stevens, it used to be Cruising Associates. Uh, and most of the time, I think we dealt with waters, it's been Cruising Associates.
Josie, do you have anything to add?
I think Bob wants to add something.
Uh, first security, basically. Purchased, merged, Cruising Associates.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Into their family company. Operates strictly because of the banking.
I have walked me out, I'm gonna bring it back in.
Shark tank in here.
It was like Hunger Games.
You ready for me to bring it in?
If you decide.
We're gonna vote in public.
You know, I mean, are we done talking?
Are y'all done talking? I mean, I think y'all pretty much said, you know, it's like.
Straight up, Hunger Games, like, it's like.
I've always liked the presentations that Cruising Associate gives, but at the same time, hard to beat uh the experience of.
I don't know that we need to change one more thing around there. Misty, you have anything down there?
I'll just stick with Cheryl.
Hi, it's nice knowing you, it's Misty. Misty, I really appreciate your input.
That's the wrong.
Thank you so much.
No, but I'll.
Yeah, you give me a thumbs up or a. I mean, I don't know.
I, I just want to say, I appreciate both presentations, okay. Appreciate both presentations, uh, very helpful and, and very good information. I believe that someone on the council likes to make a motion for a recommendation.
I'll make the motion, um, I recommend that we stay with Raymond James. We've got a track record uh going back many years and, and uh with the city. And, and I appreciate what Raymond James has done, and I've been here for all of it, so. I can say that they've been very easy to work.
Second?
Oh, second.
Second.
I do.
I do too. I do too.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Karen Warren?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Steve Higginbotham?
Yes, sir.
Justin Cowger?
Yes.
And Amy Rochette?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Those are two great presentations.
I want to thank you guys for.
Yeah, great presentation, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna bring Cody back up, uh, next, next item.
Winner conference.
Hey, now that doesn't mean when we go along, we have to ask for that all.
Not all once, no, we don't.
When we, how, what's the goal of us getting our number to active owners, or how, when will we get?
After two votes? I think you passed the ordinance in December, then we'll probably have info, start having information.
But we have a quote by the, what, possibly to ask for?
Gerald will already have it.
I don't know, we won't do that until it's approved, then, then we'll.
Have a guidance, we don't have to pick out full amount.
Take out the full amount.
You have to use which case, but yeah, there you are. All right, anyway, I'll, I'll be, I'll be in touch, yeah, I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
So, so does that, next, you all decide to Cody, just explain what we're doing here.
Um, when I applied for the step grant, this, this letter, uh, they requested that we make some changes to our policies. Um, effectively, nothing in the policy has changed. They requested that we changed the wording, just to clarify some of the things, uh, their concern was that the policy just wasn't um. Explicit in overtime, uh, that we were trying to divert overtime into compensatory time. And how we have been operating uh, since we've actually had overtime and compensatory time. Is that the employees are able to pick whether they'll utilize at that time. Uh, they can either have the money, or sorry, the hours paid out as overtime or deposited into their comp time. And so we just clarified the language in it, um, nothing essentially has changed in the policy. Uh, we took out, they didn't like how we actually had some of the examples under the vendor paid. Um, listing out step as one of the examples of what would be paid as vendor paid, they requested that we. Um, step as an example, um, and so we did that as well, and we estimated as grant funding or. Essentially, noth- nothing's changed.
That would be like Wes.
Uh, the Ravington, um, if we get called uh to go like help with Berry Fest, uh, just any kind of, any kind of events that are paid by us. Reimbursed to the city.
My understanding is with the council have to act on this.
So by, by ordinance, um, the mayor and I approve uh my policies and we just make sure that we notify.
We just want to notify you of it.
So nothing, nothing, the, the policy's changed, it's the wording has changed to just to make some clarification.
Wordings changed.
Is the fire department at eighty-six also, just, is that?
I, I could, I don't know.
The fire, are they at eighty-six every two weeks?
No, they're different, they're fifty-three a week, I believe.
Yeah, I, I, they're different, that could be incredible.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Matt, go ahead.
We're fifty-three regular with three overtime, we're FLSA mandated by the state. So we're only fifty-three regular and fifty, and sorry, fifty-three regular and three overtime, just mandated by the FLSA.
He wrestling with the gopher in that?
No, he's, I don't think so. Did you hear Justin, Matt?
I can't hear Justin.
Look up there and talk.
Are you wrestling a bear?
Am I wrestling a bear? No, I'm talking on an iPad, I'm trying, I'm sorry, I just didn't.
All right, I think we're good with this, right, any, any questions for Cody? No questions, Dusty. Thank you, sir. All right, next, uh, I did, I, I got Jocelyn here. And uh, I did send out proposed changes that, that she submitted to me, I, I think I emailed everybody to look at. And uh, Jocelyn's here, if you have any questions. You want to cross the podium, Jocelyn, I don't, I don't know if they have any questions for you.
I have one on the city. How are you guys?
How are you?
Misty, Misty has a question for you. Hey, Jocelyn.
Let me pull it out, Misty, one second. Don't have a minute. Okay, all right. So the fifteen mile radius, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not change it for police department to twenty-five? I don't think so.
No, no, man, our, our policy is fifteen mile radius.
Okay, so we're, okay. So, and then it says employees may be subject, so what was the difference between may or should be or will be? For the taxes? What, what are? The taxes for the. So who gets charged taxes versus who doesn't, I guess is my question.
Did it, everybody?
Well, they have a take vehicle, they should, that's why I'm asking, cause it says employees may be subject. So that's why I'm wondering.
We should fire them, not get charged.
Right, responders, correct, that's the.
But, but.
Is that correct?
Cause they're, they're on murder call, they don't have to pay, but. Harbor heads do.
I wouldn't think that the, like, first responder vehicle. That they should. None of us can drive them, nobody else can except them. Everybody else that has a city vehicle is. That has a sign, a city vehicle, yes. I just, we needed to change that, said maybe subject versus will be charged. Okay, I can see that, I mean, I get it. I want it to be clear, that way no one had any questions, so.
All questions?
Questions, changed.
Any, any others?
Bear with me, cause I'm, I, I have not seen this, so can you tell me what, what we're talking about exactly, I mean?
It is. He'll send it out on nine twenty-nine, I don't know if you.
I don't think, I don't think he sent it to me.
I don't know, I didn't, I said, I said.
We're talking, so we're talking about someone who takes their vehicle, or may, maybe, I think personally.
Someone who takes your vehicle on what?
Maybe, uh, that's what I'm asking, what, what is it, cause I haven't seen it. I'm assuming, is it say maybe subject to tax, okay, which I think is probably the case, because we are not the. Uh, the IRS, and ultimately, that will be the determination that they will have to make, but I think they will have to claim it.
It's like personal property, or what are you talking about? City vehicles, that's what I'm talking about.
That's, that's what I believe I'm talking about.
Yeah, I, I, I'm. That's why you say the servant.
Right, exactly.
You're saying may be subject.
I, I think we're putting them on notice that they, they may have a tax liability, because that would be uh arguably a benefit that they are receiving. Uh, in the form of wage, but I mean, ultimately, I don't know that we can make the determination whether or not that will actually constitute. Because perhaps they have a deduction that would, would offset that.
But if we are taken out of their payroll, don't we take it and then put it right back, because then that will.
Charge them the tax, yes, we've been doing that for ten years.
See, it's being taken out of.
Audit, audit may do that for.
And that's where I'm, I'm behind the ball, because I haven't seen this, so. There being tag, so basically, we are withholding some sort of allotment based on, on what uh. Uh, so some calculation that we have come up with, what the benefit of that usage of the vehicle is, is that correct? Okay, okay. IRS, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, audit may just do is like.
That's, okay, well, and that's.
I get charged too.
And then that gets, it gets figured out at the end when they do the return, whether, okay, that's, that's fine, okay.
I don't know if you go down a little bit, probably those IRS policies, I mean, when I read that, maybe subject to taxes per IRS guidelines. Whatever, what you're saying.
Right.
Well, as long as that's fine, I'm good with that, I just wanted, cause I knew we were taking it out, so I wanted to make sure we were covered. Well, as long as that's fine, I'm good with it. I just wanted, because I knew we were taking it out, so I wanted to make sure we were covered.
Every, everybody but can at least some fire.
Okay.
Because they're emergency responders.
No, 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 hey, there's a truck on my name at all times.
He gets charged. He gets charged. You're talking about Rob, he, he, he gets charged, yes. He gets charged fifteen dollars a week.
Fifteen dollars a week?
Yep.
And then it'll be a deal for a truck.
He's on, he's on call, he works, you know, on that ball field, he's on call for it, he works weekends, so. Yeah, he, he, he's the one takes care.
Then, but what's been withheld, he may actually pay more than that at the end of the year, when, I mean, when he claims the American value of whatever, the, the benefit that he's receiving.
That, on, on the employees, it's fifteen dollars. On mine, they have to figure out lease deal or something. Audit figured all that out for me because my, my rate's different. I think mine's only eight dollars because they charge me just a mileage from here to across the street.
So it, we charge them, like?
It doesn't sound like we're charging.
You're charging, they get rebur. So they're just paying the taxes on the fifteen dollars. That's, that's what.
Just like other things that are taken out.
Weirdest thing I have.
That's what I was wondering.
That's what it sounds like to me.
That is so backwards, Arkansas.
I agree.
That is, fits our state right there.
I know that when I first started and I was told it was the way it was and then.
That's actually not a thing, yes.
That's crazy.
I didn't know that.
I can look into other cities.
Might be the same. If you, if you receive a company car and you work for, for a corporation, that is a benefit and you're gonna, you know, you you've got paid, that's income, arguably.
Yeah, and it just depends if you do it at the end of the year, if you do it by paycheck, like whatever is easier.
Done by paycheck.
Right, it's a car allowance, exactly.
You've got to figure out the percentage of what's personal and what's business and.
Any other ones?
Right.
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, I have a question in regards to the post accident. If a drug test would be performed or not? And I know just places that I've worked at personally. Um, whenever we're driving, driving a leased vehicle or company vehicle or whatever, if there's an accident, it was an automatic drug screening.
And.
Whereas here, whereas here, it's, it's more up to, you know, determine the situation.
Well, for the most part, it is. If, if they do require to go see, uh, uh, or if they are required to go see the doctor or go to the work comp doctor, yes, they will have a post accident drug screen. If the employee does not require medical attention, then we're not, we don't send them for a drug screen specifically.
So, yeah, if they just have a rec, so I'm good, like, or maybe we do, shouldn't we change that?
Yeah, I mean, I.
And, you know, I put my two cents in, whereas I think a corporation could do that. I think we're playing a little bit of fire with Fourth Amendment rights because now we're conducting it, but what could be perceived as an unreasonable search upon a person by, by doing a drug test.
Yeah, well, employers too.
And we, I mean, if there is.
They vehicles though.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it's a city, yeah, it does, doesn't it? It's, it's, it's the taxpayer's car.
Again, though, you've got the state mandating, uh, someone succumb to, to a search.
But they sign on to our policy at our city, right?
It, it doesn't.
Is there anything legally you can put in there?
I think there needs to be some sort of other probable cause or reasonable suspicion, uh, before.
That's what you're here for.
Okay, yes, I mean, that's, yeah.
Municipal legal agree that if they don't require medical assistance, it is best to leave it at that, you know. And if they do come back and ask, you know, a few days have gone by and I'm kind of sore from that injury I had, then we do, uh, uh, more and more extensive when they go, they do, because it's not a rapid drug screen. It's like, uh, the MRO looks at it, it's pretty intense.
What about if it's, if it's, uh, an accident that's caused, say a motor vehicle accident that's caused by the employee?
Yeah. And yes, they. Well, she's saying if they're not. require medical attention.
My, my position would be it's that the officer on scene at the accident should at that point make the determination and I, whether or not they believe that someone's intoxicated or not, anytime you disagree.
I just, that's the city employee, I think, as they said, you sign a policy. I don't know, like it been, or for any job that I've ever signed.
Well, that's the difference. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the public employee, the state.
What's the difference?
Is a private, yeah. If, if Walmart, they can test you whatever they want. We are the state. You're dealing with Fourth Amendment issue on that.
I've had to deal with this more so, but there is no expectation of privacy while working. Now, they have to comply with my requests or they're looking at disciplinary action. Now, those requests can't be a drug screening. We're not doing a blood draw, which would be a violation. This is a UA.
Saying any employee in the city, if they're involved in an accident, you, police officer are the ones to determine if they needed to have a drug screen? Is that what you're saying?
No, it is not.
Okay, that.
It's up to the, it's up to that department head to say whether or not in HR.
What if it's about if it's a motor vehicle or accident outside of city limits? Why would they have the company vehicle out there and have the wreck? Is that, I mean, is that?
So what might have been doing is anybody, regardless of fault, regardless of they're a passenger, if they're a driver, if they are in a vehicle in which it has been an accident, everybody has been sent for a drug screen. That has been the general stance as of today for all city vehicles.
As of today.
And that's what I agree with.
He mean, not as of today, he means like up.
Up to today, yes, correct.
Is that right, Brian? Is that okay?
I, my legal opinion is that is our overreaching and, and potentially a violation of Fourth Amendment. You guys at the council, you guys get to vote and make the.
Right, well, we get to get guys.
I first went over this policy when I first started four years ago. I've I agree because again, coming from the private sector, but we also did our drug testing there on site. Here we have to send them somewhere and we don't always have somebody available to take them. Ideally, I would prefer that when there is an injury or an accident or they need to go to the doctor, that somebody, a supervisor accompanies this person. We don't have the manpower to do that. We don't have that amount of supervisors to do that. So we rely on them to go to the clinic and you know, I make the appointment, but they have, we, we have to trust that they're gonna get there. But once I make the appointment, they ask, do they require, uh, post accident drug screen? Yes. And I always say yes when they're going to the clinic. And now, when we allow someone to take the car, are they signing something that says, hey, I'm taking this car if I get in an accident, blah, blah, because it seems like if we put something like that where they have to sign it, whether it's this handbook or a special form, we're letting them know, hey, if you get in an accident.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, you could be drug tested.
It's our policy.
Right, it's a policy. And they sign it knowing full well that they're they're gonna have to follow their assignment.
Let's take that one.
So how could that?
I, I, I would disagree with that. And, and let me distinct, like, to me, with the PD and fire department, and we've got several, several departments that are safety sensitive, that I, I think they fall under, um, you know, other authority because of that. But I mean, arguably now, like, uh, medical marijuana, we could not discriminate in an administrative position for someone who, uh, is a medical marijuana user. Um, does it, does it make sense kind of on that? So I think on these individuals that are not safety effective, that, that I think would be unreasonable search. There is, there is cases out there where you've got a medical marijuana card and you're driving and you're smoking, you can go underneath the same rules as DWI.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
Because you've got a medical card does not mean you can drive yeah, under the influence by any means. No, same thing when you're taking your Xanax or your what, or your sleeping pill or whatnot. I've, I've any and DWI on a poor old lady who's taking her pills, the way the doctor said, she doesn't understand because I'm taking it just as it's the prescription bottle says to take it. Well, I'm sorry, man, you're under the influence.
It also says on the pill box, do not drive or.
So I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying, Brian, that, um, that we, that we can't.
But what I'm saying is because we are a governmental entity.
So we actually have more authority to press these issues than what law marketing would.
As a whole? Or as a police.
To make sure that these things are followed through with.
I'm following you on, on the PD, fire department.
That's, that's his entire city.
Okay, I'm, I'm not following you then.
So it doesn't matter, city employee in, in general. So like, if we were asking for an intrusive test, I believe you one hundred percent.
Exactly.
Way is not intrusive. And now that's the stance because anybody who drives down the roadway is subject to a, a UA. If that's a test that we request. Now, you can deny it and you know what the criminal affairs are, which is, it's the same thing.
But I think that that should be the investigating officer or department. Not administrative.
Well, what's the difference on that and reasonable suspicion based on the officer's judgment of would be reasonable suspicion?
I think we're talking about something was an accident.
Well, under my employees, there wouldn't be a reasonable suspicion unless the officer on scene determines their suspicion.
If there is an officer, but if there isn't.
What I'm saying is with, you know, if responders, that's different, but say with my staff, um, where's the reasonable suspicion? Just because they're in an accident, it doesn't mean they're impaired. Um, so that's where I'm, I'm, this is the issue I've had with that, this, the whole thing with what he's saying is where is the reasonable suspicion for us to even do a UA? Um, it, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't, we're contradicting ourselves if that's the case with the marijuana policy as well.
Well, I think the marijuana just needs to be that's a, a drug, just like we're drinking or whatever. If you're high or drinking or whatever, that's, that's all the same thing. I don't think we should differentiate that.
We test positive for marijuana, then we face consequences.
Everybody's fixing to have to change that one.
That's what I'm saying. So we're contradicting each other based on that re- reasonable suspicion issue, uh, because an officer on scene, if he is suspicious, has any kind of reasonable suspicion, then he can request that regardless if he's an employee or not. Um, so that's, that's where I'm confused on where the guideline is based on first responders to my staff because they're not first responders.
So to, to, to kind of back on what he's saying, so if, if, if an employee is in an accident on the way home this evening, an officer on the scene at the accident can make the determination, I think it'd be inappropriate for the city tomorrow morning in, in administrative state. We're gonna, you need to be drug tested.
Okay, let me, and maybe this is where the confusion. So you're saying an employee driving home? What you just said. So if it's a take home vehicle, they're still under our guidelines, correct? Or you, is, I'm just making sure, I'm thinking more.
You're on with two separate things, a, a criminal burden and, and civil. So criminally, anytime I, I think that, that we have a reasonable suspicion that someone is at work that may be impaired, I think that we can ask, you know, the, the, the police department to come and make a determination whether or not they are, yeah, exactly, that, that whether or not they are impaired and, and, and to follow that investigation appropriately.
If someone wants to take us to court over, we're trying to take care of our citizens and safety and stuff like, let's do it. I'm just saying, I, I, if, if that's how we're doing, Cody thinks it's fine.
Yeah. I mean, we've caught automatically you drug tests, is what you're telling us.
I think this is where I think it has a little bit better of, of a guideline, is if there is an accident and the employee is at fault.
That's what I thought.
That's what I was trying to say earlier. Yeah, I agree.
You know, employee gets hurt on the way home or while working.
It's not their fault.
I don't see how we can push that, but if they are at fault.
Yes.
Even on the way home.
We do that.
Even on the way before that.
There's no problems with that. When's the timeframe?
Oh, come on.
We're dealing with it right now. We have to wait five days to get a report back or a few days. By that time, that drug may have already left the system.
That's true. I was thinking that.
What can we determine at fault? You, you see what I'm saying? So
That's what they did.
I think this okay, we're talking about a vehicle accident. Who's gonna go to a vehicle accident? Police officer. Police officer shows up and a person shows signs of intoxication. That, there's your probable cause to then administer. You know, breathalyzer, UA.
That's what I'm saying. And, and that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, that they have to get there in a better position. The investigative officer at the scene to make a determination of whether or not there's any reason to believe that, that the individual is intoxicated.
Now, the only thing that might be different is if your guy is out operating a lawnmower and he flips it over and you're the one that shows up and he's stumbling around. And, and I know you've got the background, but you know, might be showing signs of intoxication. Is that when we then call the police?
It's a motor, it's a motor.
It wasn't a motor.
Still get a DWI on it. Like at any point, they'd still fall under the criminal.
Falls off a ladder and you walk up and, you know, you smell alcohol and.
Well, that's working under influence anyway. So either way, I think you're, you're able to do it.
You're still.
I mean, that's where the.
Background issue, it'd be public intoxication, we could still call an officer out. Are you impaired? And then the officer determine that. And that's all I'm saying with all this, is we should be allowing the officer to make that determination on scene.
Well, they are.
Because they're the best trained for it. So why are we not allowing it to be put in their hands to make that decision out of there?
I don't know if that necessarily changes their.
It doesn't change our policy. He was just saying, same protocol.
Policy.
No, I think that right now, the policy is honestly saying that it will be done administratively.
At our discretion.
Which I don't think is, is necessarily the best way to do it. I think it's done based on reasonable suspicion, but.
Discretion and reasonably suspicion, like, I feel like those are very similar.
Let me ask a question. So in the past, you may have had somebody that was impaired, let's say, driving a truck. They did get in an accident or anything. But someone suspected that they could have, under the influence of something. And that department head order a a drug screen?
I think what they could do is, is contact the police and the police could, uh, a- at that point make a determination.
How about a police discretion?
Done. Well, so that's what I'm, but so okay, so the department head cannot do that. They have to call the police to have.
That would be my advice, is that they contact
the reasonable.
Law enforcement who is trained in this.
That there are, there's reason to. Does two admins agree? Is that how you had it worded?
Yes, the department head and human resources will determine if a post accident drug alcohol screen is needed based on the information reported.
Which, okay, my opinion, yes, I would send everybody that is involved in any kind of accident to a drug screen, but I have to go with the recommendation of legal. Because ultimately, he's the one that's defended. We drug screen all departments prior to hiring. What again?
This.
Hey, this is Matt. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Matt.
Yes.
I've had somewhat of this situation in the past where I've had to call the police and then allow them to come in. And so I would say, because I'm not an expert in the category of if they need to be drug screened or not. And so I've called Cody in the past when I've needed this. And I call, and he done his evaluation. And so then I was able to talk to Jocelyn. And so I think if the police need to do an evaluation, if they say someone needs to be drug screened, I think we could add that to the policy. I don't think, it just has to be the department head and HR or the mayor. I think if the police just says that we need to do a drug screen, I think that would be great because I've had to use Cody in this situation before.
But keeping HR in the loop.
One hundred percent. I kept HR in the loop, but Cody was my advice to say that, yes, we have to do this. Because I'm not the expert, the police are. And where me and Jocelyn were in the loop, one hundred percent, they told us we needed to do this. And in my case, we didn't have to do a drug screen. They was able to do a breathalyzer and we were able to get rid of the employee just with a breathalyzer. So I'm one hundred percent agree. If the cops say do a drug screen, I'm good with it.
I mean, the way this reads, human resources will determine if a post accident drug or alcohol screen is needed based on the information requested. I could mean, he suggested it. And so I'm saying, okay, let's do it. Right?
I mean. I agree with that. If the department head and HR are told by the police that we need a drug screen, we will do a drug, drug screen.
Hey, can we just tail this part for, where this is going way.
Right, but here's, but here's, I'll, I'll just put this out there since we're talking about it. If we are called, we are not assisting administratively.
Right, it's, it's enforcing.
Criminal, yes. Not assisting.
Calling that, yeah.
I think that's one, that's great.
You're doing it on the criminal side of it.
And I'm not gonna be asking for a drug screening if we determine that.
And I'm not gonna be asking for a drug screening. If we determine that this is something that needs to be done, my drug screening goes to the crime lab.
Which it should.
Department head, I'd agree.
General, the general way to show drug screening goes to department health.
I agree with that as well. Hey guys, I think Justin wants to maybe table this drug testing one.
I mean, unless we can move forward on this.
Do the other ones?
I, I, I agree with what he's saying criminally, but like, we're, we're kind of just.
Probably what we should do is send this drug test, let him review it, come back and we offer.
I agree it should be criminal, yes, and I.
Can we look at other cities, what other cities are doing?
What?
We look at other cities to see how they're wording it.
Yeah, we can.
And this is what.
In fact, this is actually, I think, from the municipality.
That's what they say. I mean.
Sample.
You get your information from whoever you. Like, if I can smell alcohol, I'm gonna call him to do a, a breathalyzer because I can't do it. So. If he says. I mean, he's going by what I'm saying. And if it comes back to where this person is intoxicated, then that's when, that's my information. That's why. Choose or I determined that it needed to be.
Well, let me put this though, like after what, then you said, so say someone, you know, they take the car home. They get in an accident, let's just say by themselves, right? They, you know, or swerve to hit a deer because they want to hit a deer or something, right?
Get a tree in total.
Right. And let's say Cody goes out, investigates it. There was, he didn't do a breathalyzer, he didn't do anything. Are you saying then at that time. You could, or the department head could then order a drug screen?
How would they know?
But that, hang on, and if that's the case, like Anthony said, well, if the guy was drunk, we order it three days later, obviously it's gonna be out of his system. So is that? Like, is that a scenario?
Refuse, A, that's a crime in and of itself. Secondly, i- i- it's my experience that the vast majority of judges in Northwest Arkansas. Will look at that as a sign of a guilty conscience and you will still get a conviction for a DWI if you refuse.
Yeah, I can, I can second that. That's true.
I've, I've heard that in this court. I've had it here, listen.
The only other option would be for anytime an accident is reported. Then the supervisor or the department head would have to get to that.
She'll be there anyway.
Here, here's the other.
I thought we were tabling this.
Yeah, I'm trying. That's what happened in the city of Centerton because some of our employees live outside the city.
Still, still property. I mean, I, I say table.
So we wanna, so based on what Justin said, do we wanna? Do we want to table to, or, or hold up on the drug testing one and prove the others? Are we getting rid of all the other ones?
Either, even if we hold up though, he's still gonna enforce it's a criminal like.
So, of course, of course he is, yes. Well, I'm looking at it now.
Table, I mean, is it gonna mess anything up if we table it all? I was gonna say, why, are we gonna table it so Brian can look at it and, and give us something? Cause are we just tabling it just because we're tabling it? What are you tabling it for?
So you haven't looked at any of these?
Hmm, I haven't seen these.
Anywhere next time. I'll say we table them. Make a motion to table.
I've got motion to table them all.
I'm gonna second that, that's fine. I'll second that.
Until Brock can look at it.
I mean, I'd rather have.
I know, Justin did.
Yeah, I think it's better to have, have a chance to look at it.
All in favor? You want to pose? All right. All right, next, next is Mr. Don Castillo. Do I? Don, let me get that.
What'd you say?
Hang on, let me get the proposal. All right, so Don, Don wants to talk to y'all about parks impact fees. Yeah, also Samantha's here. She's with the Parks Recreation Advisory Board too. So she, she's here also.
All right, hey, Don.
I'm here to talk about how Debbie is a park impact fee.
I'm Debbie.
So what, when we're in line?
I'm Debbie.
First of all, you guys are familiar with park impact fees, so I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of detail here and spend a whole lot of time. If park impact fees are paid by the developer or the builder, that's time of the application of, of the building permit. It's typically at the option of the builder or developer, a pass through cost eventually to the owner, occupant of the, uh, uh. Of the home. Uh, the fee is for new construction only and not charged on current residents. Excellent. What is a park impact fee? Basically, it's a fee charged on new construction because of the investments already made in city parks. That will be utilized by future owners of a home. Residents or the apartments who contribute very little or none to the expense of the building are maintaining the current park systems. So it's, it's an example of a person moves into Centerton from. Outside somewhere has, has spent very little money inside Centerton. Yet we have a pretty decent park system set up already. That has cost the city quite a bit that they started utilizing and they need to contribute something towards that park system. That's why the impact fees for, next slide. Park impact fees. Centerton is one of the fastest growing cities in the state for the last number of years. The numbers that you see on the screen right here are, oh, yes. These numbers right here are current numbers as of last week. Whenever I got them, we have currently four thousand two hundred and forty-one new homes or apartments in the pipeline. Uh, so when, when is the, this is not something that will last forever. Because we're gonna.
This is not something we can afford to park impact beyond now because it's already started, right?
I'm not sure e- exactly what, where the process is here.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come in behind Don and talk a little bit too, so I'll answer that question.
So anyway, it, it's suffice it to say that the fast growing in Centerton isn't gonna last forever, so we need to take advantage of this while we still can. Next slide. Where are pack impact, impact, where are park impact fees already implemented? This is, this is Bentonville right off of their page and you can't see that very well, but this right here is the park impact fee. Uh, that Bentonville. Uh, imposes on new construction down there. And basically it's two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars per new home.
Doesn't matter how big the house is.
How big the house, I'm glad you asked it because I'm gonna get to that in just a second.
Two thousand one hundred and ninety?
Two thousand one hundred and ninety-two, I think is what it says. And for an apartment or a multi, multi-unit complex, they charge, uh, one thousand three hundred eighty-two per unit. But if you got a fifty apartment complex, it'd be fifty times that.
That brings money.
I don't, it's a multifamily. Don't start that.
Bentonville is based on a flat rate. Uh, I, I picked these three examples here because they show three different ways of, of computing. Uh, the park impact fees, Bentonville's based on a, by a flat rate. Uh, this is Fayetteville. And they have a complicated formula. This is off of their webpage as well, uh, and, and their legal documents. Chapter one sixty-six and development, their code. Uh, parkland dedication, they have some deals worked out where if, if you donate land, if it's a, if it's a developer or something like that and they donate land. They might be able to reduce what they're paying for impact fees. Uh, so they've got some complicated formula, but in lieu of, of some calculation. Then they charge each home, for each new home, one thousand eighty-nine dollars for each single family unit, nine hundred and fifty-two for each multi-family. This is based on, this, oh, they base their co- their calculation on the size of the lot. This is for a point two-three acre lot. Or less. And this is for an average of point two acres per unit.
Bentonville again, it's flat.
Flat rate. My personal opinion, I like the flat rate too. It's a whole lot easier to fill out with, rather than having to calculate everything. But. Uh, nine hundred fifty-two, if, if, if the lot size is larger than that, then that calculation goes up. And, and the thousand eighty-nine dollars per single family unit would be higher. And that Fayetteville's based on the size of the lot. Next slide.
This before they move dirt?
Next slide is Conway and it's based on the size of the home. Uh, this is their impact fees here. I pick Conway because they're also a growing community and have been for a number of years. They don't grow, they're not growing near as fast as we are. But, uh, they're growing a couple of percent a year. Uh, but their, their impact fees are based on the size of the home. And you see the single family units here, the size of the homes. And the park impact fees here. Say a multi-family, one hundred and forty-seven dollars per unit or a mobile home, five hundred and fifty-six. Dollars per unit. So that's just three examples that I came up with. It's all in Arkansas. It gives you three different calculation. Ways, uh, of determining what the park impact fee would be. Next slide please. Why, why implement park impact fees? This is just. I don't know what happened there. Is that your arrow in the way right there?
I can, I, we.
Okay. Why implement park impact fees? This is what we spent the last few years to improve our parks here in Centerton. Give you a park, five hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. It would have been a whole lot more than that if we hadn't done a whole lot of the labor ourselves. I think that the estimate was what, to build that park? Was a million and a half or something like that? Well, over a million, but because we did most of the labor ourselves, it, we cut it way down. Uh, splash pad, four hundred thousand, raise one of the bike trail, three hundred thousand. This is what we've been spending on, uh, playground equipment at, at the neighborhood parks. Next slide.
Is this before they move dirt or is it when the permits are granted? Like how, where's this in the process? When that, when a developer comes in, everyone wants forty-two lots, is that when they pay this?
They pay when they get the building permits.
Yeah, when they do the building.
So we don't have an idea of what achievable universe is for charging us at this point with everything?
No, we'd have to do a study. I think Anthony's gonna talk to you about that.
The splash pad would be paid for it with a.
We got grant money for it.
But I just still say the concept of it is.
Hundred fifty thousand dollar grant.
Because it didn't come out of our pocket didn't mean that, that it wasn't paid for through the city. Okay, uh, projects in process. We have a pump track that, uh, is being built. I, I believe it's gonna be started before the end of the year. A hundred ninety thousand, it's already been awarded on that. They have a BMX track being built. Uh, for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And I hear rumors about a community center being built for, I don't know how many millions of dollars.
I don't worry about that, Don.
You know, so. We, we think our parks department is continuing to grow. And the expenses will continue to go up as, in addition to what it costs to build these things.
And land gets tighter as.
And land gets tighter. What, what's not included on this, city personnel and labor for maintenance and nut keep and a large part of the building. Uh, that we've already talked about, like the ball fields and the different projects of the different projects and the cost of land. I know some of the lands donated, but we had purchased some of the land as well. I think Anthony wants to come.
Is there a legal way where we have to use this in like your market specifically across, or is it just like a general fund?
Anthony go over that.
Anthony gonna help you.
When the city of Bentonville implemented all their impact. They've added, they've changed the name, but originally it's Tischler and Associates. On the east coast, like. Cause yeah, there's very specific laws from lawsuits that you have. Like it might say, you can't use it for operating expenses. You can only use it.
That's exactly what I was asking, yeah.
I don't know if that's what he's gonna be going to.
I'm not trying to do dirty work.
Like when we did the water and in, water and sewer impact fees, it can only be used in the area where it goes all into. Just rolling through the general fund, it has to be used for what ordinance sets it up on.
And it usually spelled out in the city ordinance. You guys have any questions?
Sorry.
I have any questions? This is something that I've been looking into for a little while. Don approached me, um, it kind of just fueled the fire again for me. Um, because we looking for alternative ways to get some of these products paid for because playground equipment's so expensive, just not all the other things. So this is one thing that I've been talking, talking about and Don, like I said, Don came at me and it just kind of fueled it. One thing he did miss that he didn't put in here is that impact fees don't just have to be for park systems. We can use, uh, for police, fire, water and sewer, which water and sewer could do their own things. Uh, but we can also do it for street improvements and other things. Bentonville does all of those. They also have a library impact fee.
So. Community center impact fee?
Oh, that's part of parks. Uh, but the pro- I've already started the process. I've, I've met with Bill and, and Lorraine. Uh, we've got to launch, um, RFQs for the survey. Um, our laws in Arkansas are very specific, like Darren was just talking about. Um, they laid out pretty easy for you, but it's a tangle of webs that you've got to jump through and this is not an easy process. I'll be lucky to have even anything to put in front of you by this time next year. Um, yeah, you, you have to get a nexus study done. Um, you can't just arbitrary pull numbers out of the air and say, we're gonna charge a flat rate of two thousand dollars. State law requires you to do this study and they make suggestions on what you can do and what you cannot do. Um, so that's why you see the different types of impacts, the way they do it. Bentonville did do it the smarter way of everything I've researched. Um, and just doing the flat rate that is the smarter way, like depending on world and a few other things, um, it could affect your decision based on that.
Well, it takes a long to get a test.
Well, because they're doing a general study. There's other things that, uh, that I was throughout, but, um, because. The city must have a, a community development plan in place. That's one thing I'm working at on what it's gonna take to be considered a community development plan. We have to obtain land to be considered a devi- development plan. Can we use existing parks? Um, we can reimburse within two years of current projects with impact fees. Um, so if we do approve this here in a year, we can go back and get BMX pump track, whatever we done within that two years back refunded. Back towards, it's based on impact fees. If we choose to do that or just eat it and use that money for the future.
How do we do that?
I, I'm, that's part of the study.
You're gonna go back to a developer and say, hey.
No, 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 just based on the, um, future. If we collect, you know, four hundred thousand in one year, we can pay the city back for previous two years based on. Projects here, but they're very specific on how you use that money. Um, and the answer to your question is we have to earmark that, create a separate bank account that's only distributed that money. Um, it can only be pulled out for those specific projects and it's just, it gets audited like nobody's business. Yeah. So, but you have to earmark it. It can only be used for that. So we can't throw all impact fees in there and then police pull money out of that for theirs. Can't do that. Police has to be designated as a police fund and their impact fees only go into theirs. And so it is, everything's gotta be divided up. Uh, and it's, it's basically for accountability based on the APA, um, American, uh, Planning Association. Um.
What were you saying there?
Oh, no, what, what Anthony was getting at is so since the. Say if we got the parks impact fees and the, and it only be used for parks. That since the cost is a hundred and ninety thousand, we could use a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the impact fee. And then it could just basically roll back into the general fund. We could pay it, pay it off basically. Why it takes so long is they have to determine what is the impact of each roof on the city of Centerton? Okay, is it just?
You've gotta have.
Dollars for parks, five hundred dollars for police, five hundred dollars for fire, all that stuff. And you could have an impact fee for each. One of those, but yeah, Bentonville, you know, different than Centerton. It might only be a thousand dollars for. Cause I think altogether, if you did the full amount for Bentonville, it's like forty-five hundred dollars.
And the juice court, does we know, like, I don't know how much the survey costs, but like, with truly. Executable park system, I mean, or I'm sorry, neighborhoods as of right now, like is it?
Well, I'll tell you, based on just Bentonville. We have a grow, a, a larger growing area to be able to put parks and stuff than Bentonville. Um, and I'll tell you, that's how Bentonville's able to afford to put twenty million dollars into a park. Um, by these fees, like Don just showed, we got forty-two hundred homes coming in in the next year.
Those are taking up a heck of a lot of space and so it's like, what's left in land?
There's some land that, that's checked on.
Yeah, for to serve our city with the community center.
Well, and, and.
No, somewhere else.
I am working on about land acquisition, you know, having it donated through these builders and phases of community, but that's, again, that's stuff I've got to work through. Um, with that, that survey, the survey I have to get. Fast, um, because that's not gonna be a quick process. And then based on their recommendations is where we have to take an action plan afterwards. Do we, do we go after land and then try to, or are they gonna allow us to build on what we already have and that count towards the development plan? Either way, we need to be acquiring land of some which way or another. It is donated, we purchase it, um, how the mayor goes about it, we, we, we have to.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about. By the time this goes in, like, it, it, the land can already be locked in if it's within zone, it's like, is it even? I mean, can't slow down. The process.
Yeah, I can't change that. Um granted, we are working right now how we built Kimmel and Womack. You know, we had that donated and we just built off it. We're gonna continue to do that process. This is just to help. Pay for these bigger projects, cause you know, you know, like Keller and Womack, that just that playgrounds, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars.
Just let us know how uh what it's done. I mean, this is great.
Real quick, sorry, just real quick. I don't know if you know or if the mayor knows. Right now, where is the impact fees going in the budget? Just the general fund?
We don't get it. We have currently any impact. Sewer has. Water and sewer has their own, but they're completely separate from us. That's why we're bringing this forward, because we don't have any.
Oh, I thought we were looking to like streamline what.
No, we're just starting to the process to.
I mean, is there anything legally that we can enforce now like a small amount?
No, not without a survey. If there's a lot of case study already where cities were getting sued um without proper, proper justification.
Cost to survey.
That I don't know. I've got a couple of things out there, but we've got to release these RFQs. Um and get some numbers coming in um and go through that.
One of the reasons why Centerton is one of the fastest growing cities.
Yeah, because we're we're.
Because we haven't had impact.
Well, no kidding, yeah.
It's been more affordable to build here and that's been part of the expansion for twenty years.
How do we slow it down until then?
Yeah, and now we're at a point where.
Well, it's it's probably too a little too late or a lot of it.
Sure, commission, been through this. The conditions that the state set for impact fee is very specific. The first thing you gotta do is that you gotta develop a plan. And you got to decide what it is you want and where you want it, you know, and so forth. Then you need to hire a consultant. And can translate those into an appropriate impact fee. Because if you don't. You're gonna get sued.
I'm on our Chamber of Commerce, Josie.
Well, he could develop a plan.
Yeah, he could have developed a plan.
Developing the plan.
We sit down and started looking. We could come up, we came up, we had plans. We knew where we wanted to go. But when we started trying to look at the complexities of how to compute what an impact fee should be. We hired a consultant.
How long will it take to get from now to being able to implement?
Uh if you have a plan. Of what you want. You know, I can't tell you how long that's gonna take. But once you've got your plan, it will probably take three to six months. A consultant to do the job.
Outside of the study, the study hasn't been done regardless by state law. Again, it may be different for water, but he he's saying.
It's the same, it's required.
Okay.
You gotta have a, my first step is you gotta have a plan. To have projects identified, you got that. Do I gonna find land? Am I gonna just develop? And so on and so forth. Once you have that. Then you can turn to a consultant. And.
You know everything you need.
I've run over my thoughts.
No, I do not. That's what I'm working for there.
What you need.
Nothing from you guys right now. Um I was just coming, I didn't wanna.
My wife is was expecting.
I wasn't trying to. I wasn't trying to s- steal Don's thunder or any of that kind of stuff. I just wanted y'all to know that I was reporting what he was saying.
Me neither, yeah.
And I was already starting the process, but it's not an easy, like he's saying it's not an easy task.
You're talking about community.
Yeah, and it's not anything we wanna rush.
No, this is perfect because I think we've been several uh council members have been saying. We need more parks, we need more this, we need, we need all of this. We've been saying this for. You know, a long time.
The community development plan will be the most important out of the whole thing. Um because even the study is gonna return around and require you to do a development plan.
I mean, but do you have everything you need? Like, when can we, when can you get this going?
I already got it in the works. I, that's why I said I just talked to, what was that, this week? The beginning of the week, I just sat down with Bill and Lorraine and. Um that they would talk about launching the RFQs for this, this survey to get started. And then I'll come back with the price.
Yeah, but we had to get them approved at home.
Yeah.
It took Fayetteville just over a year to start and get it approved.
Yeah. I've been told by this, the few cities, I did call Conway. And I talked to Brian, I have a contact in Brian, and I haven't talked to Bentonville, but everybody said it's a little over a year just to get it back in front of you guys.
Well, we'll call special man for need to.
But I'll have to get, you know, the art, the survey approved anyways through you guys. I guarantee it's gonna be.
Can you try to get that?
My best, yeah. Only budget time.
Take some of Kerry's budget.
You've got plenty, obviously.
Bought six toilets.
He's at first cars.
Oh, that's ten. You guys got any questions for me?
This is perfect.
Like I said, I just wanted. I just wanted to back Don up and say, let you guys know that I was starting it. Um and I I had met with Don.
I'm all about more green space.
W W D D, what would Don do? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, next is uh. I think I've emailed this to you already.
This was email plus I also emailed you. Anyway, Bob.
At the Water and Sewer Commission. That basically provides you the basic facts. We do provide. We do serve certain city. Certain people outside of the city with sewer services. That is. They're either a single family or a specific business. And that's only after very careful consideration. Where they are located in a part of our service area that is within the municipal bounds of a double city. Then. Please note in two thousand seventeen. The General Assembly enacted a new into the municipal annexation. Portions of the law. That prohibits voluntary annexations from creating an enclave. That is property that is bounded on four sides by a city. We have received a request for sewer service of a developer for a multi-residential development. Of a minimum of two hundred and twenty-five residences. That appears will be located outside of the city. Because of this enclave. Requirement. They've not been able to get adjacent property owners to agree to the to an voluntary annexation. The commission is extremely reluctant. And. Tried to decide what it was that was causing the problem. And we believe that the present city policy of only voluntary annexations. Has created numerous irregular boundaries that will prohibit the orderly growth of the city. Future annexations because enclaves would be required. Please, can I see the next? Slide.
That one right there?
This is a map. Of the smaller purple line. Is the city boundaries of Centerton.
The smaller one?
The outside line is our planning. Notice the. Irregular boundaries. We believe. That unless. Continuing this voluntary only annexation plan. Uh is just gonna create further problems.
So the darker ones are planning areas. The pink one is our city limit.
Right. So. Here's our question. Oh, yeah, now that we now understand that. Elections. For municipal annexations can only occur at a general election. That's November twenty twenty. Commission asked, what is the council's expectation for providing sewer service? To a multi-residential subdivision located out of the city. Where immediate annexation is barred by law due to the enclaves being created.
And I I'm gonna add a little bit to this, because I've been working with with uh. Well, and and Brian has too and they're developers. Originally, when they they came to the city. And Mr. Anderson knows this too. Uh, you know, they they were gonna come in and do a majority property owner's annexation, which they can do that. We've done, we've done several of those here in the city. Uh in the initial, they had the, they had the the adjacent prop, not all of them, but they had enough to, you know, get the majority of the property owners. Mrs. Rakes is here too, by the way. I wanted to recognize her. Uh but. Apparently what happened, some of the properties sold. In between the time they got it to us and they weren't able to get that done. So. We've also talked to the state GIS folks. Would be possibly splitting the property.
GRS is what?
GIS.
GIS to graphical information systems. Yeah, well, cause I reached out, just we were trying to help them. So what what can we do? So, you know, they go back and they say, well, we can do, you you can do two thirds of it. You know, and then not. You know, I had two thirds of the city, one third not. But that that wouldn't work for what they were trying to do. They did reach out to the county judge. And uh they were trying to make like a small strip of land off of Walters Road. And uh the the judge really didn't want to do that, because it still seems like it creates the same enclave. You know, honestly, it just moves that enclave over foot i- is all it really did.
Was that where this property is on Walters?
Yeah, it's on Walters and Harlow. It's on the north northeast corner. Northeast corner, right next, right next to, actually next to our water town.
Multi-family going in there?
It's uh.
Single residence. Maybe duplexes. But mostly.
It's a single family. It it's sorry to interrupt. It it is single family.
The family homes.
Single families.
Cottage style. There's. Bunch of single family homes.
Where is it? You said on what, what tree?
The northeast corner, Walters and Herbaw. It runs all the way over to sideways seventy-two. Lies south of our water town.
So I wanted to, I wanted to mention that they did attempt to. Yeah, I I just wanted to, you know, mention they did attempt to annex and they've been talked, but. Apparently it doesn't appear it's gonna happen unless they can go back and talk to the property owners to. Or get the majority of the of this, I think there's five or other property owners than you, right?
It's by the ponds?
Yeah, it's across the street. I've said that earlier.
Hey, right here where the.
Yeah, that's it. That's. So they got the majority of the land, they don't have the majority of the property.
Is that, is the property across? Harbaugh Road to the south, is that not?
No, it's not.
No, that's not, that's in the county.
He tried to do that too. I think they tried to get them to annex.
I don't wanna take away from Bob's speech. I'm happy to tell y'all the the history of this, because it's been long and winding.
What is, so just so I understand, because I'm hearing lots of different things, so just so I understand. Right now. It's county? Correct. Okay. We wanna bring it in for water purposes, correct?
I have to provide a water. There's no problem with that. We have to provide a water. We do not have.
The discussion about.
Sewer.
Okay. So it's for sewer. Their county, what benefit? The Centerton. As a city. Get from.
Revenue from the sewers.
There's no benefit.
They stay in the county, no. Not go get any taxes.
Correct.
But uh no turn back.
Stresses are sewer water. It stresses the system a little right there. Is it right where the pond is though? Is is that my?
That one is in the northwest corner of the property.
Oh, this is by the one with the old water tower logo. On set off of seventy-two right there, Walter. I said, it's right by Big Sky, okay? Well, this is the one has a.
Sky's further up.
And so we're, so the discussion is, do we annex that in for sewer? That's the discussion, correct?
Yeah, I think you, you you can't have an election to bring it in until November of twenty-four.
Okay, so what's the discussion about?
If you can't do a voluntary annexation.
I think he's just looking for guidance, because the policy they approved in twenty-one said that they can. They can consider providing service. Yeah, I question the policy I.
The the question is that. We we know that, you know. Right now. That you, we're not gonna be able to get them annexed in. Without getting more property owners. Maybe not successful in doing that. I thought November twenty twenty-four. It gives you the council the ability to. Well, straighten up the boundaries. A little bit to try to solve it. And to get.
You know, let me get so big. Can annex the forty acres because it creates these enclave?
Two to the west, yeah, two to the west, south of Pines.
These two here.
Yeah, and then.
Two lots on the north side.
Two to the north.
So where are the other people getting sewer from?
They don't have it. They have something.
Okay, they have something.
So what impact, okay, so what impact does this have to current citizens and current developers?
That was my question, Josie.
Say it again, Josie.
What impact does this have to current citizens and developers?
Well, okay, what it would do is it sets precedent. For future development. As a commission, we're not prepared to set that precedent without your guidance.
Well, on the other hand. You won't be able to develop this unless you get Centerton Sewer. Well, well, and in particular, it's not me, it's it's the rakes who are. Being held hostage by their neighbors and I'm I'm. I'm sorry, I want to point this out. This piece of property. Is, I believe it is in here. Which, so basically you have a piece of property that the city has completely wrapped around. But because of the way Arkansas annexation laws are written, the neighbors. Are allowed to hold the rakes hostage and it'll never get annexed until. Something changes in the combination of people around them that are willing to annex and. I don't disagree with anything Bob's saying, but the the problem is, is that. We, the rakes don't have any other option. Um they're they're trapped. And they should be annexed. They're almost closed in, but they can't. So there is no property. Touching. Rakes property.
Yes, they're they're.
That the city.
The water tower is on the north side.
We have worked. So we touch them.
There's this part on the west side, there's this part on the north, it's just.
So you're landmarking thirty-six maybe, just we, we're shy of a forty because the water tower chunks it out. It's my understanding. That if the property.
The state law says you shall.
Is adjoined. Just by other property. That they can voluntarily come into the city. It's the particular way in which it's, we've tried every combination of every different method of annexing and have even. Confirmed that we cannot do it without doing something tricky like the mayor described, leaving a strip. It's not possible. Um under the current configuration.
When did it, when did the? Other than next slide. Next slide, next slide, Bill.
There you go, that's.
It's a piece of property right here.
Beautiful piece of property.
This person, this person, this person, and this person.
Said no.
Four property owners. You can see that the maturity of the property is in that. Rick's property. Okay. Law is very specific. If this was to end the annex, we'd have one, two, three, four enclaves.
Okay, so. We cannot create it. That property can't. Create an island.
That's right. Can't create an enclave.
If they can submit the paperwork, that mean the judge or the state's gonna sign off on the annexation.
I think you're, they already talked.
County judge said, Sinjor, you got a problem, you fix it.
Yeah.
What, so what, what, what's?
He's still mad about something else.
I I haven't talked to Barry in a while since this point. But I gotta explain. Really are no options. I mean, we can do it.
Really are no options. I mean, we can do a citywide election. All this stuff in. However, I tried to do that before too, and that didn't go real well. I mean, we did it about five years ago. And I had.
But I think that was meetings.
Well, I mean, I understand.
Very, five years ago, involved very different kinds of situations.
I understand if the homeowners don't want to be part of the city, then it's the county. Get that part of it, I mean.
It's the fact that the Rakes family would like to sell their property, recover a value for a widow that's in advancing age.
Maybe I missed this. What, what's the question or concern to the council?
The question that's concerning council is, can you provide us some guidance? Should we provide sewer service for multi-residential subdivisions located out, out of the city? Where immediate annexation is barred by law due to enclaves being created.
Do we need it?
What's our, what's our policy on that? Do you, do you not have a policy on providing?
If that's its annex.
This policy has been, with a single family, a single home or a business outside of the city may be considered for sewer service. And for those, and if we, but we, and we should provide multi-residential developments within the city limits of another municipality located within our water service area. Those are the two cases where the commission provides sewer service outside of the city.
Okay, so this is gonna be multi-family, so that's the issue. So it's not single family?
Well, it's multiple residential property, single family residential, it's a big project.
It's already been, has it already been sold then?
I don't think.
Well, no, it hasn't been sold.
Hold on, isn't this, so, hold on, going back to, is, so, we have a similar situation, right? So not in this regard. But like where, where we kind of voted on something before. The road. I thought we're getting the, or the buggy here.
Hasn't been sold yet.
So is that, is that, yeah.
Sailors pending on.
I don't want to set the precedent.
You have one said WNS policy.
I think we discuss it and we vote on it.
Yeah.
It, it has to go to the county judge.
WNS policy?
Annexation has to go to the county judge. Just to be clear, so you would be discussing.
I don't mean vote today. No, I don't mean any of that. I'm just saying, I mean, it's brought here for a reason. So we're discussing it, so we have to, do we have to do anything?
What we, like, the commission would like the city council to tell us what we should do.
Exactly.
We've got a policy in place.
No, while he is not, our interpretation of policy does not include these large developments.
Yeah, we should follow.
His whole in his hostage.
Well, then he's a corrupt judge and should not be.
Wouldn't want to take any action unless we have some, some type of policy in place to be reviewed by legal. And if the, and if the property owner hasn't even attempted to annex yet.
We're not allowed to by law, it would be. Y'all wouldn't be able to. It would be, it would be an invalid annexation. It, there, it's not possible.
Darren, what it is, is that we can provide out of city sewer service to a single family or a business. After due consideration.
Is her single family?
We made three of those. Okay? We also provide sewer servers outside of our city to those developments, the residents that are inside the city limits of Bentonville, that are in our water service area.
Well, we understand what you're saying, man. We get it.
We never anticipated this kind of situation.
This is an uncommon situation. To be, to be clear, this is, I have not ever seen this before where it was totally impossible to annex due to a couple neighbors holding the keys to the annex.
What's the reason for that? Like, what, what's the feedback there?
Feedback on.
Neighbors, like, I mean, is there something wrong or something?
They just, they prefer to live in the.
I, I mean.
And not get serviced by our ambulance service, like, I don't understand that.
You have different counties, there are. County, there are different things than the city. I mean.
You're less laws.
No comment on that.
They're gonna get it to Texas for you.
I mean, on my analysis, none of those property owners would be prevented from doing anything that they are currently doing. They're just big houses on big lots. It's not, I don't know, no one's operating a, you know, mechanic shop or used car lot or something.
We've tried to annex other areas that didn't want to be annexed in either, so we understand that.
But like I said, yeah, if you, if you, there is a way to do it, you can annex it by having a municipal election. The next municipal election opportunity is November of twenty twenty-two.
So what are we, what, what, what is the discussion? What do we do?
He's just looking for guidance. He wants to know what the discussion was. Said he was looking for guidance. Yes or no?
Yes or no on?
If we provide sewer services.
Before they're annexed.
I think no.
Motion.
I, I didn't know if we are sources. It wants to be a single family home or a business, I'm reading.
Hey Brian, you got Dropbox?
This is multi-residential developments.
The statute I'm typing pages in there, the last document. The current policy that was approved in twenty-one.
About sixteen sixty-six.
I don't need to build sixty family homes and all sixty people have to sign a contract with the city, but yet, buying the house, I gotta be aware that there's a contract. It's all these, this policy.
I think the discussion tonight is around, do we want to jumpstart and do it before an election? And I don't know that that's a precedent we want to set, I think is what we're talking about.
We follow the law.
Is that, is that, am I getting that right?
And then I guess if you want to do an election, then we need to go through that process because I think we need to notify those property owners, have them come down here and talk to you guys first. And that you get their feedback. I mean, in all fairness, because
I did agree.
The last time they didn't want to be, but that's not what he's asking.
Since this is proposed as two hundred and twenty-five rental units, that would be the difference between single family owned.
No, these are rental homes.
What's there?
These are all, these are all gonna be rental homes.
These are single family rental homes?
Yes.
Are they gonna be individual lots?
Well, it'll all be one lot, one home per building. It's their, it's, it's.
Townhomes.
Yeah, they're tall, tall skinny homes.
They don't share a wall.
No shared walls.
So it's like the zero thing that Lauren showed the other day, yeah.
One lot, one holder, multiple structures that are designed to be single family.
That's correct.
Well, based on your policy, it looks like you got one owner to sign that says, I agree to all the conditions. I won't see what the issue is based on this.
Impact of this, of doing this, that's a precedent because it's large scale.
Correct.
And we have restricted this to, you know, one house at a time.
Your policy doesn't restrict it. If the owners agree to it, any property owner or owners, property line outside of city limits.
There's another provision in the ordinance that sets forth.
It says.
It sets forth to us, you know, gives the commission some discretion.
You're the expert. I would think whatever the policy allows is what should be done.
That's been our policy.
I think.
Policy versus the written policy. It's your policy versus the written policy.
Well, we, that is in a different section of the ordinance.
We only will do it for one house. I wouldn't provide.
Well, it's there inside the city, but.
But this is county.
Yes, so Brian, I have a question for Brian. What are the legal, um, parameters here? If we do it, this is, this could happen, or we do this, this could happen. We say yes to sewer. This is, this could happen. We say no to sewer, this could happen, from a legal perspective.
My biggest concern would just be set president.
We can't overrule policy, we can't overrule state statute. I don't know what else we got to discuss.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
You, you could tell us to, you know, do it and make.
We wanted you to allow.
Straighten up the, you know, the boundaries.
Could it, look, just a question before you, before you make the statement that you're going to. Could it be that the property owners that are adjacent don't want to come in because they don't want that kind of housing right next to them?
Doesn't matter what they want.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's even been.
It does.
No, because that's their.
You were saying the other day that you wouldn't want to live, I mean, in the past.
But they have their, they have the right to choose that though.
That's right.
They moved to the county for a reason.
They're saying they don't want to come into the city.
Which is, that's their right.
They have a choice.
One hundred percent, and, and.
And I mean, if it was going, if it was going single family homes in a subdivision.
They may buy in more.
They may be interested in the coming in.
It's an investment property.
I, I think you guys are, I mean, I, I don't want to get into the development because it's really, the, the question is, it, 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 it can be boiled down to a number of units for these purposes. I, it's gonna look like a neighborhood though. It just so happens that one person alone will be ready.
I have that right to speak that though.
But it's, I, I mean, really just the question is whether to sell sewer to a development outside the city and it doesn't create legal precedent. The only precedent it creates is, is perhaps other people thinking they can do it. But this is, again, this is a strange situation where you have four people who own ten percent of the land, holding the keys to someone else's retirement estate. I mean, i- is what it boils down to. It's, it's not, I, I mean, that's, that's the situation that's going.
Hey, I get that, and we're not trying to take money out of the pocket, but what I would also say is now the, the, the adjacent property owners do have a right though. So we, we, we feed someone's retirement asset and you, you piss off additional potential residents because we went against this, might have the retire, like, we, we can't make a decision based on that.
I think we stick to what the law says and let's know at the election and then.
That's what we want to pursue, or do we want to discuss that at some point? I mean.
That would be my vote. I don't, I don't know voting or anything like that, but that would recommend.
You need some cover about water. Oh, she was asked to say, wait until the election. Are we wanting to do an election? Do we want to discuss that at some point? I mean.
I mean, I would say whatever the state law is.
The law will say we have to do an election. That was something the council would decide. We don't have to do it.
I know that.
So what steps would it take if we just?
I mean, if we, if we wanted to do that, then I think the next.
You don't want to do that. That's just.
If you don't want to do it, then we don't do anything.
So which, which also puts her at risk of being able to sell her land.
Then I, my recommendation.
And, and again, you know. I mean.
Recommendation is that we don't do anything.
Well, I think he wants some guidance, though. I think he.
The guidance.
They've got a policy in place and what guidance is or.
I'm confused on what we're doing. That is, that would be my guidance is, you don't do anything.
I, my concern is as if we set a precedence on doing something like this and they're outside the city. And then we come a- across what we had, was it been ten years ago? Or less than ten years, when we had a complete shutdown because we were at an impasse for what our capacity could take.
Oh my God, that was eighteen years ago.
But I mean, what does that do to the developers that are inside the city limits? It shuts them down. And I'm, I'm not saying that your subdivision would do that. But if we set a precedence, then every subdivision out in the county that approaches the water and sewer, you, they would have to accept them also. So then what's that gonna do to our developers that are in the city of Centerton? It's gonna shut them down. I, I've lived through it once. I don't want to live through it again.
Right of what? We're playing.
And I understand that, but.
Keith, what do you mean?
This is Matt, can I?
Centerton shut down.
I think Matt wants to say something. Matt, go ahead.
So the piece of land that I'm looking at is between Herbaw seventy-two and Walters Road, is that correct?
Yes, northeast corner.
So what I've been looking at, because I have another, because I agree with what Amy said about a county judge. He's not a very decent guy, in my opinion.
Oh my gosh.
That if we take, um, pines and we go over there and we hook to Big Sky, and then we go over there and this has to do with Rakes Place. If you have over fifty percent of the land and fifty percent of the owners, you can island this in. And that's what we need to look at is to see if we can go get fifty percent more of the land and fifty percent more of the owners and I'll, I'll land this in than trying to figure out if we have to go to an election.
We tried that, just. Yeah, we, we've, we have tried every combination of every landowner within probably a mile to try to not make an island. Um, and then there's also a concern that when you do a majority annexation, you technically can create islands under the letter of the law. However, the state has blocked them before, so it comes with a, a risk that county judge approves it, y'all approve it, and then the state blocks it because they, their own interpretation of the law decided that they don't want it. So it, I mean, we, we've, we've been down every conceiv, I don't, I don't want to shut down any ideas because we're certain. We've, we've been working on this for a long time.
A different plan.
And this is, as I said earlier, this is, this is really a last ditch effort. We can't, I mean, without this, it's, it's more or less just no annexation.
To that map that shows the property.
I mean, we invite the adjacent property owners, I'd be curious.
We, we have not. Was it, you want this map or this map?
Yeah.
Well, where was the one that actually showed the property? Well, there, okay, it's there. It's there, it's right above your cursor.
Right there, right there where my cursor is.
Yeah, so there's, there's two property.
All this property is in the city limits.
There's two property owners that would, we would create an island.
Or, or two, only two down there and then two up.
One, three, four. This is the forty acre tract that the Rakes own. So if they annex, they'll go on to four parcels.
They can get two more of them, then, then they got the majority.
And one of them is, one of them is in agreeance and they're willing to annex with us. It's.
One more.
We're, we're lacking one person.
I mean, any feedback at all? Like, what's the deal?
I, I just, I mean, I, I think it's kind of along the lines of what Amy was saying is that I just, they just don't want to be in this.
And also like it's a retirement, it's like, I don't disagree with that.
That all used to be county out there.
If I'm.
It's a Centerton group.
If I live there, same thing. I live one. I don't want rentals beside me. I mean, and, and I don't blame them. But we can't make our decision based on that. We also got to understand that there's four islands that would be created too.
And just so you know, we did, you know, like Amy was saying, we did annexes properly to the north, our water towers, uh. Big Sky, Sean Casey's property, then there's another part, what you're gonna do is a house, house back there.
There was nothing out there though. That was all farmland. Like back in two thousand, thousand.
I wonder if it's just an education.
I just, I would just, we'd just like to hear what the city council has to say.
I gave my opinion.
What do the others say? I don't care. We're all pretty much on the same, no, no action needed.
No action needed.
I say.
Thank you.
I say look at that one property owner that, that you need and you might, one turning point. I'm gonna say this and I don't care if the county judge hears, but you might tell him, try to get an ambulance.
Yeah.
Don't have a medical. It could take over thirty minutes to get an ambulance to you, although there. Although there's one, there's gonna be sitting right across the road. Here real soon, within half a mile.
Wait, is, what's gonna be sitting there?
Yeah, I agree. I agree, Keith. I agree.
What about it?
All right, we ready to move on?
Future, there's gonna be an ambulance sitting on one oh two, and it can service them.
Well, that's the judge, that's the county judge. That's his.
I would, I would go that.
Buy the land.
Get that fifty percent.
So, are you, are you here representing the developer?
Uh, yes.
I'm just trying to see the whole, whole picture.
We ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, I think everybody's, all right. So, I wanted to come to the podium, because the next item is talking about bonuses. And.
Hold on, hold on, wait, is that, is there no action?
There's no action.
Yeah, that's what y'all said.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for hearing us out.
All right, back, back to this. So, so I wanted to come and I wanted to kinda stand in, in the party, talking about the bonus. Kinda answer some questions that come up from the past meeting, and also some questions that came up in the November eighth meeting. Uh, when we approved the last bonus. So, I just wanted to come talk just for a few minutes, uh, just give some insight. So, this bonus plan that we've, we've done, has been in effect for at least fourteen, fifteen years now. Uh, it was actually brought into the city by the previous mayor, Miss Griffiths. And when I came in office, I, I went ahead and continued on with the bonus. Thought it was a great idea, you know, a little incentive for our, our, our people. Uh, we've never put it in the budget. And it's never been in the budget prior to me. We've never put it in the budget now. And I know that there was some discussion about that, but one reason why we feel like we didn't put it in the budget. Is, you know, say I hire, say I hire somebody. You know, we hire old Joe here. Joe, hey, we're gonna hire you to work in the parks department. By the way, we give a bonus every year. And say we get in a problem with our budget. And what do you think the first thing is gonna go? It's gonna be that bonus. We're gonna cut that out, out of the budget right away, if we have to cut something. Uh, so, it's never been in the budget. Uh, but a couple of things I wanted to say is, these, these hardworking employees there, they save you money every day. They do a lot of stuff themselves. For instance, the police, you heard the chief up here talking just a few minutes ago. And he was talking about putting lights in cars. You know, they do that themselves. They go out to the firehouse, they've got all wired. They, they, they save thousands. Dollars for the city doing that. The fire department, you know, we were talking the other day, uh, one of our guys got hurt, but they fix their own fire trucks. You know, Matt will, will, you know, he, him and his crew, they'll get out there and they'll fix them. Same with public works. They'll get out there and they'll, uh, you know, fix their own equipment. Uh, they, they don't resource that. They change their own oil up there. They just save lots of money. So, so anyway, back, back to what I was. You know, we did call it a Christmas bonus. That was on the recommendation of the council. I know on that, on that November meeting, there was a lot of discussion about retention bonuses, longevity bonuses. We could call this thing whatever you want. It doesn't have to be a Christmas. We can call it a year-end bonus. We can call it a longevity bonus. I know that. Uh, our previous financial director, he come up here, he even talked about, previous city, they did also give retention bonuses. They split them out. You know, they give sixty dollars a year for the first five years, which is actually more than what we gave last year. I don't care what you call it. I mean, I, I, I think, uh, people work. And I've always said every year, and, and our previous mayor said the same exact thing. You know, we always came in November and we had a good forecast of, hey, we're in good financial shape, like Shannon talked to you a minute ago. Financially, we were good. So, uh, I, I, I feel like if it was, if we were in bad shape, we couldn't afford it. I would never brought it to you. I've said it every time that I've brought this back, and I've brought it back now thirteen years.
Uh, Bill, how, how do we get the numbers, though? Let's just get to it, Mike, seriously.
No, I just want, I wanted to finish with this. So, Amy did, you know, at our last meeting, she said, hey, I, yeah, I suggested maybe we bring it back mid-year. I listened to the recording, and, and it did say that. She made a suggestion. No action was taken by the council, but she just made a suggestion. Let's, let's talk about it mid-year. And usually, when we come back mid-year, we're coming back and asking for more. However, mid-year, we weren't in very good shape, so we didn't have anything to bring back. That's why we didn't bring it back mid-year. I wanted to answer that question for you. I mean, but if we were coming back, yeah, yeah, we're gonna add police, fire, trucks, whatever. Again, I just wanna emphasize, these guys are hardworking. I, I remember in the meeting that Justin did bring up the, the thing on November eighth. About we just gave good pay raises. We appreciate that. They appreciate that. Uh, you know, they, you did give them raises. You did bring them up to, to, up, up to the salary study. Unfortunately. And I think Cody will, will chime in on this if he wanted to. Uh, a lot, especially police departments. A lot of, a lot of cities are now just bringing their salaries right back up, so we're not in that ballpark anymore. And we're not asking you to do anything with that. It, it, it's, it's hard out there. They're hiring police officers, you know, everybody. Same thing Matt will tell you with firemen. They're having a hard time with it. But, and then Amy brought up also in that same meeting about, we also pay premium pay, which we did. But one thing I wanted to say about that is, a lot of cities paid that. These, these employees, they were out there with coke every freaking day. Fire department, I watched them come to the house next to my house. And they had to suit up. They sent this one guy in. They put him in a full suit, mask and everything, just so they don't catch coke. These policemen, they were, they were in and out all the time for COVID, you know, dealing with the public. Uh, our own staff was like that, so. You know, yes, they did get premium pay, but they sure worked through that COVID thing, and it, it was rough. And again, uh, the thing I wanted to ask for, and, uh. You, you know, I, I appreciate the council giving the bonus. You know, I, I consulted with Shannon before the meeting. We are in financial shape to do it, as, as you seen on the financial report. If we were like seventy-nine percent of the budget, we're, we're well under our expenses, so we're, we're fine. All the departments could afford it. Yeah, and I would just like to mirror what we did last year, which was employees under six months was one hundred twenty-five dollars. Employees from six months to one year, uh, was, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars. Employees from one year to five was five hundred. And I believe, and I have to go back and look, I think for five years to ten years was seven fifty. Then everybody over ten years was a thousand. Cause we got a lot of long-term employees here, and, and that little bit of money, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of money.
What's the total spend?
It's probably, it's, I would estimate about sixty thousand. That's where it was last year.
Okay, so let me ask a question, just running business. I agree that they've done a heck of a lot. Where do we get the number, though? Like, like, if the city doesn't perform, we're in good shape, yes. But if it does not perform to a certain extent, like, how, how do we? I mean, if we, if. Just, just below the number, we give a number. If we're just above it, like, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand, how do we put a policy in place? Cause, you know, we just give it cause it feels good in the past, and they do deserve it, but like, how do we put those numbers and not budget for it?
I base it on, it's just everybody staying on budget, because they aren't well under budget, and, and they're doing very well to save lots, save lots of money. These guys, you know, like Anthony Hill, just for instance, he'll come and he'll give you, so. They, they do their homework. So, you know, they, they, they try to save as much money as they can. Cause if we res- resourced all that maintenance out, all those lights and all that stuff, you know, it, it would be much higher.
I think it should be in budget in the future, to be honest.
You what?
I think it should be in the budget. If it hasn't changed in the last several years, I think it should be in budget.
Anyway, I, I just wanted, and I don't know if any of them wanna talk or not, or, yeah, sure, of course.
So, I do, I brought my notes. I finally found them. Yes, November eighth. Um, so, I, my biggest thing is, um. Of course, they all work hard. No one, no one doubts that. Nobody on council has doubted that they work hard, right? I think the concern was, like Justin said, the amount. I actually wrote down different amounts on November eighth that we had discussed. A little bit different than your number.
I'm just giving you a ballpark, right, yeah.
And different numbers. It's, it's, it's the, um, expectation, right? It's the expectation of a bonus that, um. You know, if it's not in the budget, I think people expect it, and a bonus is just that. It's just, it's extra, right? It's not, oh, we expect to get a bonus in November or December. Um, so that the, it's not that everybody doesn't work hard. We see that. Everybody works hard, right? Things are tough for everybody. We get that. Um, I think it's just the expectation, and, um, to Justin's point, you know, maybe we do put it in the budget. If this is something that people are gonna count on, then let's not count it, uh, let's not call it a bonus then. Right? Cause a bonus is, is just that. It's, it's an incentive. You don't, you don't count on it. Um.
I think, and, and, and I, department heads probably saw, I'm not gonna count on it.
It's, it's never not been. It's expected at this point, cause we had, it is expected at this point.
Hang on, hang on, just a second, I'm not done. It is expected. And I love all the department heads. But it's, it's shown that it's expected. So, let's call it something else rather than a bonus. And I'm okay with your pay structure. Um, I actually, like I said, we talked about different amounts. That was just two flat rate amounts. From one to five, and then ten plus years. For easier budgeting and easier for department heads or whatever, however it is. Um, that's just my two cents.
But if you put it in the budget, then it will be expected.
And that's why they call.
Just like Bill said, if it's not in the budget, and the city can't afford it at the end of the year, then what do you do?
Well, it is expected.
It's not, I don't think, if it's not in the bu- if it's not in the budget, I don't, I don't see how it can be expected.
I, I'm gonna put Anthony on the spot real quick, because Anthony made a comment that his people. And I don't know if he used the word expected, but he talked about his people relying on it. Right? So, that is, that is part of an expectation. I think we should put it in the budget. I don't think there's a problem with putting in the budget. And having, um, a tiered, um, policy that, that the mayor laid out, or you go by what. I had, I don't know if anybody else wrote this down, but I had from November eighth. Year one through five, years of service was five hundred, and anything ten years or plus was a thousand.
So, anybody under a year doesn't get any.
Correct.
Correct.
So, as far.
That I wrote down last year.
You, but your people.
You incentivize them to stay more than a year.
But you, but the people that have been here. Are higher.
That's just what I wrote down. I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying that is.
His was two fifty and five hundred up to, it's like, this actually is over.
So, the, the two fifty, the one twenty-five, I was just to give somebody who had been here a thank you. And, I mean, obviously, they haven't been here for the entire year, so we, so everybody understood that, that it doesn't need to be the whole, the full bottom threshold. Now, as far as the expectation, no, we don't expect it. Because we don't, we don't even discuss this until it is at the end of the year. This is not discussed in any kind of interview processes. This is not something that they, they know is not a guarantee. Because we have to know as far as the financial health of the city, so the expectation isn't there. Now, like you said, some of the employees who have been around for long enough, they may have the understanding that most likely, yes, they're going to get it. But until we actually go back and tell them that this is what we're doing, we don't even discuss it.
I just think we need a process, though, if we're percent under budget, this is the rate, and, cause it, it's, it's hard, like, what if you're one percent under? But what if you're fifteen percent under? Maybe that's more. I don't know. I think there just needs to be a process, was kinda going back to the pay bands, like, if you. Perform under budget more, you incentivize more. If you perform just at budget. I mean, we, we have to be able to run a business, and that's why I'm saying budget for it, and incentivize, okay, if we're, again, do well, you.
Be very careful on providing, providing incentives in the public sector based upon. Under budget. That is something that other cities have gotten in trouble.
It's prob- it's probably, if you're gonna do something like that, it probably be more.
I just wanna, I'm just putting it out there. That's something that you, you have to be careful with that.
We're calling it. None of us are for getting rid of.
Right, no.
We're just re- talking about restructuring.
So, the only thing, or, I guess, from aiming is changing the structure. It was one to five, five hundred.
And plus.
And plus a thousand, so. Amy, employees are, I, I, I kinda am. It, it just really. I don't know any other really good word. It would suck for that guy that's been. They, they get a goose egg. You know, yours was under a year, nothing. You know, for some of these other employees that've been here for, for, you know, two years, hey, they're gonna, yours, they get five hundred bucks, so, oh, well. So, one to five, so, I mean, obviously, the, I mean, the question is, not any way thinking about getting rid of it, it's just how much.
Right.
Right, and that's what we discussed last year. It's like, hey, do we call it? You know, let's not rely on it, and I'm gonna disagree with you, because I think the expectation is there, otherwise, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Or last year, we wouldn't have this big discussion, so. Respectfully, I'm gonna disagree.
Full house in here last year.
It was.
I'm also gonna say something on that, cause you, that you, in your terms, was calling me.
Sorry.
I, I think you're confusing with wanting and expectation is two separate things. Some of my staff want it, because that's the only way they can, um, you know, provide a good Christmas.
Budgeting, Anthony?
I, I get that. I, I get your argument. I'm not saying I disagree with your argument whatsoever. Now, legal wise, I don't know. But expecting it would be, okay, I don't get a Christmas bonus, I'm out, because I can get paid flipping burgers as much as I'm mowing grass. That's the difference to me. Um, but I also believe in the tier system that the mayor's benefiting it, because. How are we benefiting the employees that have provided in showing longevity and loyalty to the city? Such as myself, as this gentleman, where.
Made it a year. That's awesome. Five hundred dollar bonus. I mean, that's cool.
But in the same, with the same breath as Darren, I mean, that's kinda crappy. Around the holidays, we go, you get a big goose egg, you know, that.
They have a job, though. Why did, this has become so common nature.
This one, that you tell all the ones that have been here that didn't get anything before they got worked here a year.
I, I don't think it matters what we call it, because I am totally one hundred percent, I think you and I, as far as incentives, we need to have incentives. That is what's going to retain employees. That is what is going to.
Like upfront signing bonuses, things, we need stuff out there that's different, other cities. I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that.
That's where this, that's where this is, is, is an incentive type of a thing. It's, it's not a, it's not.
So, if it is an incentive, I do believe we should put it in our budget.
And that's the way it's always been, because it wasn't even called a, a Christmas bonus up until. Three years ago, maybe, five. Liberalization pay.
It's been like three or four different names over the time.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's changed, it's bounced around.
Should it only be the parks in the budget? That's what I'm saying, you go, you have to have budget.
Yeah, I think it should be in the budget.
Which, in which we can, we can start doing that. It's just, that's not, that's not, not, not the problem. That would be an expectation if it is budgeted, that.
Correct.
And it's hard to say that you can't give it out if it's in the budget.
Correct, yeah, well, that's not a, really a bonus, right? A bonus is something, um. Usually, a bonus is something if you've hit a specific measure, usually, is what a.
Certain measures and things, the, the part that we have to be careful with is. Giving incentives being under our budgets.
Yeah, I, I'm not, right. I disagree with.
A, a retention bonus and splitting it, doing that in the summer and half in the.
I think we need to have a budget for it, and it doesn't need to change every free.
And, and, I, 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 I'll agree with that. I'll, I'll give you, so another example of.
About a longevity.
Correct. So, longevity pay is a lot of what places.
And our retirement bonus.
So, for instance, the one that I, I was researching, I found very readily available is Springdale. Springdale's longevity pay is fifty-two hundred dollars a year max.
They have a lot deeper pockets, too.
You, you don't know what I get.
Not in ratio. Their population is higher.
Spend it well here.
So, let me, let me ask a question. So, based on my proposal. Would y'all be good with it, and then next year, we can just put that same scale in the budget?
That happened last year, Bill.
We talked about it last year, that we would discuss it this year.
And, and the same conversation.
Here we are. We're discussing it this year.
It gets brought, it gets brought.
I mean, we could, we could, we could put it in next year's budget.
I would say, if you, if it's, if it's longevity, hey, it's longevity bonus or whatever. I, I like the, I like the. So, because there's, there's more incentive that you've, you've stayed here for ten years, or fifteen years, or whatever, versus. Cutting it right down the middle. I'm not saying that you're penalizing anybody at this point, but the, the person's been here fifteen years versus five years. It, it, it's the same. There's not a whole lot of incentive to get to ten years or to twelve.
I think that's, that's an easy fit.
So, I'm not saying whether it should be or shouldn't, that's your vote, but I'm just saying. Yeah.
Plus years, thousand dollars.
I also.
Doing that, that was my proposal.
Also, yeah, again, I think we need to have a realistic number there, cause you, you talked sixty thousand dollars. I mean, that's also a part for the city. We seem to be pulling out of the budget. That's all I'm saying. I don't, I don't like just coming up with a number last minute.
And I don't disagree with that. If it's a, if it's a longevity pay, and then it, I, I do think that, that, that should be a budgeted item. And since, and since we're in budget talks, where we can help out, we can. It's four twenty-four, and just take care of that now.
So, I wanna, and I do wanna say this to you guys, and I'm not gonna go in a, a conversation again with finances and not say this again. You guys have got to continue to look for incentives for these employees. Cause we are working on a losing battle right now. Not just police, just not fire myself. Fast food is starting out at nineteen and twenty dollars an hour. That's a dollar more than my starting salary.
That's.
How can I compete with that?
Well, and it's.
Well, no, I, I, and I.
It's everywhere, not.
I know, I know.
I mean.
But other cities are making adjustments on a consistent basis. It's like we make an adjustment, give these guys a few bucks here. And then we wait a few more years and then we're right back in that same position again.
And then wait.
Instead of every year continuously making changes and adapting to what's around us, we get back in these holes again.
Let me ask you a question. When you do performance reviews.
Yeah, you don't, you don't scale them like we.
Do. Are we giving our people the best, the people that deserve it? Have we given them the best raises?
The ones that are deserving, yes.
That's where we asked for comments though, on the new process. So that would add be a Jocelyn question too. They've, they've stayed ahead though. Those are the two that stayed ahead. Keep in mind, they, they submitted the process.
So I mean, we should be giving them raises based off of their.
And like, and like, for, like my, for me, all of my evaluations are done for twenty four. I'm just waiting on to hear back what our possible raises are to plug it into their.
And again, I think about what's the budget for races?
Yeah.
That's what's something that we have to come.
We, we, we will talk about it in the budget meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like my performance evals have been done regardless of. That's what we, with the potential raise is.
So were you saying every year we should be looking at salaries and bumping everybody up?
We should be looking towards, since I don't agree with, uh, hiring incentives. Cause me and Jocelyn talked about that. I completely agree with her because people are just gonna abuse that, wait till that timeframe goes and takes our money and runs. So I completely heart, heart, wholeheartedly agree with what she said with that, but we need to be looking at incentives every year, you know? Increases with pay, um, you know, like this, you know, if we're gonna do a bonus, then let's include it in the budget. If that's what y'all wanna do and that's. At least we know upfront, that's what, how we're gonna explain this to the employees or how we can help them. Um, you know, we have to compete with the outside market.
I agree with that, but I think to our citizens' point, what are we doing to bring more value for them? Like, I mean, this, this takes care of our city, but we also have to think in terms of like taxpayer money. Like what are we doing? Outside the parks, like what, what do we, how can we not get? Hold on this, you know, you, you know what happens. Conversation happened. They blew us up like.
I, I get that. And but my job is to create these parks that we create incentives for these ci- citizens to want to move to our community. His is to create a safe environment to want our citizens to be here. Our fires are creating a safe environment so our citizens wanna be here. That's the incentive where we draw in more funds. You know, I can't tell you how I'm gonna generate more money next year. That's not the way it works, but I have to also look after my employees. I've got five of them.
If you're gonna have to do a development plan, we're gonna have to understand what that looks like.
Exactly. That's part of the developing every year. We need to be, be making changes, not fifteen down the road, year, year down the road. We're already behind the curve.
I don't think we need to do incentives every year. I mean, uh, changing stuff. Cause here's why. I promise you right now, if, when interest rates go down. And, and inflation slows down. The first moment we say we're gonna level set this back, even though it's still a little bit behind. It's not gonna be a.
I'll be frank with you with what I mean by that is every time it's, and this is perspective from this side of the podium. As an employee against you guys. Is, there's a discussion brought forth that benefits the employees or a raise or such. Oh, we gave you guys four percent a few years ago. That's not gonna be, you know, that can't be the excuse for future on. We're gonna, we, we're not gonna have any retention. Especially when everybody else's salaries are moving up. And I'm not saying every year we need to be bumping everybody up, that whatever else, but we're not even looking at them.
That doesn't do, uh, any larger raise percentage than we do though.
They're, they're leveled. Like, uh, for public works is, um.
That's what we pay for study for though.
They're a bigger state.
I know, but we not even matching.
They should be all to do things differently because they have a bigger budget too.
In, 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 in perspective, it's a ratio.
Exactly. But you can't just pay them the same because we have less people.
Well, what I'm saying is they've got more, they've got more employees. That's why they have to.
Right. And more, and, and more revenue. Much more revenue than honestly. They have, they have more employees because they have so much more revenue.
When we scale it down, we're the same thing.
You, what is your, what is your starting rate for?
This is Matt.
Bingham might be a bad example to use with their, so I like the pay grade system Bingham had.
Structure.
I like the pay structure they have, but. In the past, when there was a COLA, the whole pay structure. Way more. I'm, I'm topped out. Because hey, I got COLAs, I got incentive, you know? So now because of what the Johansson group recommended, even though that's who we used. Once you hit top that pay grade, you either find a way to advance or we give employees incentive pay.
It's like that in any place. You get topped out in your, in your position.
To the whole thing would shift forward. If there's a COLA of four percent, the whole pay grade shift forward four percent.
And I, and I use a prime example of what I've been waiting on and I've been talking to my, my supervisors of social security. One of the lowest tiered public service payments in United States. That's always controversy. In the last three years. They increased their COLA seventeen point nine three, seventeen point nine percent ingredients. Who knows what ours was? Six.
That's more than I get.
Well, that's social security. I mean, that's a whole nother topic.
Exactly. But it's, it's known society wise as one of the worst leveling, but seven.
Let's rush the steps together.
So I think this is.
The, the point of that was is they actually evaluate inflation and base their COLA off that inflation. So when two thousand one came around, inflation was horrible. They did eight point nine.
So what happens when it goes back down though?
They drop it down. Like this year, they dropped it all the way back down to three point two. They evaluate the surroundings.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's also going back to, you gotta pay for the role too. Cause we could get that out of white girl quick.
Matt had something he wanted to say. He's been trying a couple of times.
Wait, Matt. I just wanted everybody to realize that we done a pay raise before inflation. And the thing that the council don't understand is the fact that. If fire, police, planning, building inspection, it's kind of like what Robbie's out right now with heart surgery. And so I'm having to help pick up the slack. Everything that we do, because we do not have employees, we help pick up the slack for each other. And even though we don't have a thousand employees or whatever Bentonville has, we only have a hundred and twenty. That don't mean we don't work as hard. We actually work harder because. When the council calls us and says, hey, the pond has algae in it. Police, fire, parks. Everybody that's involved goes and tries to fix an algae problem. And you wouldn't get that in the big cities. So I just want them to understand that there's only so many of us to go around. And I don't think they understand that. That's all I gotta say.
Yeah, that's a good point, Matt. And I, I think we do understand and. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
Sorry.
That's all I wanted with that is just for you guys to understand, we're fighting a losing battle. I mean, when fast food is offering more, yes, we offer some better benefits, but just understand we're fighting a losing battle.
I understand that. I, there, I. I think you probably have some positions that I wouldn't have a problem with woping up, right? Um, to get back to.
We noted.
I've also said a lot of other things too that haven't happened. I also mentioned to the mayor, other things that haven't happened. So, but, um. I think that's a good discussion that we should revisit when we talk about the budget next month. So if you wanna bring that back up, that would be great.
Well, I have a whole folder for you.
Back to the longevity, longevity pay. I like that term. I think that also does set, uh, something that. Would incentivize people. Hey, you're here for a year. You're gonna earn an extra five hundred dollars because I mean, honestly, five hundred dollars, I'm just throwing this out there. Five hundred dollars after being here for a year, that's a lot of money.
I agree.
So if you can make it for a year, you get five hundred bucks, right? I'm just throwing this out there. This is just my. It's a longevity pay. So you've got, this is my proposal, year to five, you get five hundred, five to ten, seven fifty, ten plus, you get a thousand. I mean, those are pretty good numbers. If you could make it that, right? I don't get a bonus where I'm at. Zero, no bonus at all. So this is actually, this is really.
Come to the city center today.
We'll start you out at eighteen thirty.
My husband has one and I.
Cause after that, after they're sitting here, they get some.
Right. This would be like a longevity and you get this based off of terms of service. Um, this is just my proposal, but if anybody else has something that they wanna throw out. It's three tiers. It's easy to, um, remember. I don't have to go, oh, wait, is that a hundred and twenty five? What was that? This, you know, it's just.
And, and that's for, for what you're saying, that's how I viewed.
That's what we thought we were doing last year when this conversation though.
Yeah, I think we're getting lost in some of the, the terms, but that's, that's how I viewed this as longevity. That's why it's been tiered.
Oh, I thought was, I thought it was a retention impact, uh, bonus.
Used to be called, yeah, longevity, legalization, all kinds of things.
Put this into the budget, like we decide on something, we put it into the budget and then you can use that for a recruiting tool. Rather than a bonus expectation because a Christmas bonus is, is not expected, right? This is in the, this is in the budget. Therefore, we can rely on it.
And in good standing.
I mean, it can't be right. I mean.
You two are. Now is, is here and Matt's also here.
And it's here too.
Okay.
So is Jocelyn.
Jocelyn and Jake.
She's got her rep right here.
What was given last year with the four tier? Was that, did that seem? Good to you guys?
Everybody was happy with that as far as.
I only heard part of that, but I'm good with the longevity. Because if y'all look at my budget. Whenever I got like five guys in rookie school right now. And that cost us a fortune trying to put them for, through rookie school and having to pay overtime. And so if we do, do longevity and call it that, I'm one hundred percent good.
And you're good with it starting at a year, Matt?
One hundred percent because the guy, most guys. Now, uh, there's certain guys that come on to us that are certified. And if they're certified, then they do me good. But for the first year, they normally don't. Actually count to covering stuff. That first year I'm having to cover them of actually working for us. The longevity works great for me.
Okay. What are you guys proposing?
I think they're working on a motion.
No, no, I just, I, I was trying to look.
Looking at numbers.
So I. I like what she's saying about a year drives them to stay here, but if we're, depending on performance evals, you could throw it all away. I like the, what she said on one year to five years, five hundred and five year, I'm sorry.
I said one to five, five hundred, five to ten, seven fifty, ten plus a thousand.
Year we had some.
I don't think performances need to be impacted by this, uh.
Separate.
Yeah, exactly.
This is just your longevity. You've been here a year.
Maybe he just regurgitated that, not meaning it, but he said.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we'll, we'll talk in, we'll talk in theory and. Situation.
And then their raises, their performance raise would be separate.
Yeah, that's completely.
But if their performance, if they, this is not for the salary, so it's not.
But longer you say, I think to your point, if we have very underperforming individuals, it should be a self correcting issue that they. Aren't even eligible for your longevity.
That would be up to you. That should be a discretion thing.
Five to, five to ten was seven fifty. And over ten was a thousand.
Correct.
And we're gonna call it a longevity.
It probably is over sixty, but I think it's, it's structured, it's fair. And it is, um.
Over ten thousand.
It's, it's an incentive, instead of saying, oh, we're gonna give you a Christmas bonus. You know, it's just, it's, just wording it a little bit different.
And that's how I've always viewed as. A longevity, longevity incentive.
Well, we need to pause in places about people that may leave the company.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, well.
For the numbers again, I, yeah, now so many.
Five hundred from five years, because it's, it's, it's stay a year. Five to ten, seven fifty and ten plus is a thousand. That's identical to one of those last.
Hundred year zero.
Except we're not paying until you two year.
They have to be here a year. Give us, give the city a year and then we say, thank you. Here's your, here's five hundred bucks.
I'm okay with that. I just want, you know, the, the know what is expected, not expected like that, expected from us to implement.
For feedback from you, the one to five bucket, do you break out one to three years? Two fifty and then three to five, I, I mean, just for me, hell, but. A big chunk of change there, but.
Hey, they just said that they, they're people, you know? You're paying.
Five hundred bucks, right?
Exactly. But, but to your point is, hey, they made it a year. Good shout. I mean, five hundred bucks, here you go. Uh, I'm down. I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that or at all.
I, I would say five hundred needs to be the floor.
Absolutely.
It's the what?
The floor.
Well, it was one twenty five last year.
Amy, if we're going to a year.
What was last year?
They get payable.
Buddy over a year got five hundred bucks last year.
We always made it November. You wanna make it pay.
Last year was a hundred and twenty five for one to five years.
No, and under, it was one twenty five for.
Under a year.
Two fifty for.
Six months to a. Five hundred bucks, forty or whatever.
Five hundred bucks is what?
The tier's the same. You're just not giving anything for under a year.
Come work for you guys. I haven't gotten a raise in a year and a half.
I told you, come on. I'll start you at the weed eater for eighteen thirty eight hour.
I know how to, um, I know how to edge.
Yeah, husband can help her to train her too.
Your own, you get the weed eater to go.
Right, so. I think Amy's getting ready to make a motions.
Sure, I make a motion. Three tiers.
Which would be.
One to five years, five hundred dollars. Five to ten years, seven fifty. Ten plus years, a thousand. To be paid in November. Each year.
We have a motion. And then next year we'll put it in. We have a second.
In the budget.
It's a policy. Well, then that means if they knew about it, then they were expecting it. Back to the conversation I said earlier, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion? A second.
Are we supposed to just change the rules? That's the precedent, Jocelyn. I mean, what do you think? Am I twenty, twenty days away? Like, I'm sorry. Where are you drawing on?
It's been a bit, go three different times, five years each time and I only each time five years took it, five years took it. I mean, yeah, I guess I could argue, I need a clear check.
That's funny. I didn't know that.
Longevity.
Longevity.
Longevity. I'll say it for you. All right.
Fair. Is that fair?
Yeah, no, and. And don't get this wrong.
Conversation next year.
And don't get this wrong. We appreciate anything that is given. And if they don't accept that something is better than nothing, then tough.
They can give it to me.
I'm, I'm okay. Again, it's just about that we, we know what's coming. So we know how to plan. And how to talk to our employees. Cause our employees are gonna talk and ask, just like I told them about tonight. You can ask my two bosses back here. It's all discretionary about you guys. How Bill presents it, you guys accept it. Don't expect it. If it happens, it happens. Be thankful. If not, then if they say no, they say no.
Well, I wanna make sure that you guys, you know. Are good with it as department heads. Are you guys?
Go get the development fee for these parks impacts.
I'm working on it.
Got it, Walmart.
Well, but hold on, what did we decide?
Anniversary.
That store calendar year, how did we decide that?
She's got twenty something days. She's twenty something days for a year. So is it?
Yes, but performance fees are calendar year.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Performance and raises are calendar. This is gonna be on your anniversary.
In November, so first of all, has to have a complete. Complete twelve months prior to November of twenty fourth. Be eligible for the incentive in twenty.
I think we're good. We all squared it. So Amy's made a motion. We have a second? We have a second from Justin.
Such a hard second.
Don't do roll call.
Such a what?
It was a very difficult second. He'd asked for a second.
Second, Todd. Second that bonus.
Yeah, yeah, you got Josie.
Second that impact.
Bless you, Darren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
He taking bottom.
Staying.
Justin Cowger.
Yes.
Andy Brochet.
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's, thank you. Thank you. Good discussion.
Thank you guys.
All right. Make it perfectly clear, abstained due to family members.
So do we have any other business?
Yeah, well, any update on the Chamber of Commerce or like? Empty facilities here in San Antonio? Are we gonna have any more businesses coming? I feel like there's like several shopping centers sitting empty.
There, there were several businesses that are getting ready to open pretty soon. You have, uh, Walgreens, Sherwin-Williams. Uh, Natural Muse is about halfway done down there. Domino's, yeah, Domino's. I forgot, but yeah, Domino's is probably close to opening.
Is the chamber gonna recruit, help us recruit like restaurant business?
Josie, you wanna chime in on that?
Sure, sure. We'll do what we can. We're fixing to get our chamber website up and going. Start soliciting businesses.
Just the net. One. Yeah, reason that that one's.
Inspection again. And rent's ridiculous.
Yes.
Well, I mean. So he's just gonna sit on it and just pay?
I guess.
Is it outdoor, outfitted construction?
I don't know who it is.
All right, so any other business? Yeah, so we have coffee to bear. Next Saturday, October twenty-first. Our budget work session is November second. I did hear from all of you. You all said you can make it. Uh, at six P M. I will bring, I will bring food. I don't know what it'll be. Might be Domino's Pizza. It'll be right here. I'll set tables up in the big round table.
Thank you.
And then we'll put the budget up on the screen up there too. And with that, with something like make most to a jerk.